How much it all is.
All right, we would like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight. I appreciate you being here. I've asked Councilwoman Bradshaw to lead us in the prayer place.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just come to you first and foremost today for this day that's so important in the life of our country. God, we just pray that no matter what happens, whatever these results may be from this election, God, may there be unity and peace because that's our primary focus moving forward, no matter what happens with who it is that's going to be the president of our country. And God, we just lift our country to you right now as we pray for this great land that we live in. And just pray for the meeting tonight. We're just blessed, all these people that are here representing our city and the leadership here tonight as we talk business. It's in your name we pray. Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a roll call.
Terry Lamar.
Here.
Choya Shropshire.
Here.
Lori Bradshaw.
Here.
Kenneth Reshears.
Here.
Tyler Brown.
Here.
Charles Trammell.
Here.
Chris Gantier.
Here.
Bruce Smith.
Here.
I have one petition from the audience. Nina?
Okay, this time I'm not gonna be gripping at you. I just, and Terry's gonna kill me. But Terry is receiving an honor tomorrow from AARP with forty-seven other Oklahomans for the Native American Elder Honor for contribution to country, tribe, and community. And if you've known Terry for very long at all, you know just how long he has loved our country and our community and how much he has done to encourage and promote. And so I just wanted to bring recognition for him for that. And that he will be recognized along with others tomorrow at the First Americans Museum in Oklahoma City.
So you're going with Robert, huh?
All right. Thank you. Terry, that's great. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Item three is to approve mayor to sign a proclamation declaring November 5th, 2024 John Hawkins Day. You know, from time to time, and it seems more often than not in Pryor, we have individuals that stand out, individuals that go above and beyond and have dedicated their whole life to serving in Pryor and the Pryor area. And so tonight, we'd like to recognize John Hawkins, who's here with us. I've got a proclamation that I'd like to read, and then we'd like to give that to John. You can listen from back there. I won't make you come up. Proclamation, John Hawkins Day, November 5th, 2024. Whereas John Hawkins, a lifetime resident of Pryor and proud member of the Cherokee Nation, has devoted over fifty years of strengthening Pryor and Mays County through his work in business, civic engagement, and workforce development. And whereas since 1975, Mr. Hawkins has owned and managed several convenience stores and later established a successful insurance career in Pryor, including founding Integrated Insurance Service in 2005, which he grew and sold in 2022. And whereas beyond his business achievements, Mr. Hawkins has invested in commercial and residential properties and has served Pryor and Mays County tirelessly, with notable roles on the Pryor Chamber of Commerce, Mays County Trail Alliance, the Mays County Project for Prosperity, and the Pryor Arts and Humanities Council, earning him recognition as Pryor Citizen of the Year in 2002. And whereas Mr. Hawkins has not only contributed locally, but has also championed regional partnerships as a founding member of the Northeast Oklahoma Regional Alliance and has been instrumental in state-level economic incentives through the Oklahoma Small Business Commission and Northeast Oklahoma Workforce Investment Board. And whereas his regional and state-level service and workforce development includes appointments by three governors to the Governor's Council for Workforce and Economic Development, as well as serving as chairman of the Oklahoma State Ethics Commission, which garnered him the Oklahoma State Business Champion of the Year Award in 2016. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of Pryor Creek that this council for and on behalf of the people of Pryor Creek does hereby declare November 5th, 2024 John Hawkins Day in the city of Pryor Creek. John Hawkins' legacy of leadership, generosity, and dedication serves as an enduring example to future generations. His work across business, civic, and statewide initiatives has not only strengthened the foundations of Pryor Creek and Mays County, but also inspired others to serve with the same unwavering commitment to community and progress. As we honor his contributions, we look forward to a continued legacy of positive impact made possible by the paths that he has forged for local growth, opportunity, and prosperity. Thank you.
I'll make a motion here.
All right, we have a motion from Gantier.
Second.
And a second from the other half of the council. From Reshears, we'll call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Would you all have to come up? All right, item four, department head reports. We'll start with the message from the building inspector. He says Craig and I did thirty-six, Craig, two, I-36 paid inspections over October. Twenty-five additional inspectors with contractors for Hayden and Cody from MUB about addressing issues that came up in the community. Worked with Mr. Humphries on issues that he had in houses for abatement. Reviewed several plans and remodels for homes, October 22nd through the 25th. Attended the Construction Code Education Coalition of Oklahoma, the CCECO, for the 2024 Joint Code Conference. And Ada Coalition includes I-E-I-O-M-I-A-O-P-I. This is a bunch. It includes a bunch of stuff. There's like three more after that, and they're all different. I had several homeowners and contractors calling or came to the office needing info about codes addition, zoning, and services. Okay. Johnny Jensen, emergency management.
Just wanted to go over a couple of things from the storms that woke everybody up the other night. We've had, I don't know, five or six people call, a little confused about the warnings and how they went out. Some people got them, some people didn't. Why did some in Pryor get warnings, some didn't? Well, the warning box, it's all, it's all based off the warning box. The warning box kind of split Pryor in half. Anything north of about 13th Street got a warning, anything south of it pretty much didn't. There's also two different ways that your phones will get activated during a tornado warning like that. One of them is from the weather service. Those are based off of cell tower locations. So anybody within a certain proximity to that cell tower location, your phone will go off. So it, you may not actually be in the warning, but just close, and your, your cellphone's gonna go off. That one that woke you up at 4:30 or whatever time it was, extremely loud, that's all based off of what the weather service does. The one that we do here locally is the code red. It is based off of the address that you put in the system when you signed up. So if you put an address for work and you live in the city of Pryor, but you put your work address in there and your phone didn't go off, that's why. So if you want more than one location in the system, you can do that. You just go in there twice, sign up for work, go back in, put your same name and the phone number again for your home with the new address, and it'll take both of them. So, other than that, everything else went pretty good. We didn't really have much, much damage for the city. Anybody have any questions about anything? Thanks.
Great, thank you. Chief Young, fire.
Well, we made it through that dry patch and got into the storms, but we're happy to get the storms, even though we had to deal with that to get some rain, get some moisture. We were sure enough needing it, but got nothing to say but good things about the guys. They did good. Johnny's guys and PD and everybody's always helped us when we're on scenes with stuff like that, so we're pretty fortunate. You all got anything for me?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dennis Bowman, golf.
Good evening, everyone. The weather in October was just perfect for golf, so we were just busy as we could ever be. We set a record in October for how many people played, our revenues and everything. So we had a lot of really good tournaments. We had the Williams United Way at the end of September. We had South Siders, which is a group comes over from Tulsa. Ray Family Foundation had their event out there. Life Smart was a really, it's a new event that we had with the school. That's really a neat thing with the Life Smart kids. We had a Ray Employee Tournament. Elite Fabricators had an employee tournament. We had the US Kids Championship at our golf course, so that was a really neat event. US Kids, it's a group that the kids play and their parents get to caddy or they can have a caddy aunt, uncle, grandpa, whoever wants to come out and caddy for them, grandma, whatever. So it's a really neat deal, and the championship was at our golf course this year. So that's pretty neat to have those. We had a hundred and twenty-two kids. A lot of parents and grandparents wasn't even placed to park, so it was just really neat. And, you know, a lot of them come in the day before and use the motels or stayed somewhere and ate and everything. So it's just really good to see that many people come into Pryor. We also just hosted the I-Nola Longhorn Tournament. They did a big fundraiser for their golf team, and that was, it was the biggest one that they've had. They've had, had ninety-two people in that one, so. Between the weather, the golf course is a very good product right now. Got really good people out there and, you know, just so everything come together just for us to have record revenues. Of course, we're trying to do, we're gonna do the employee benefit tournament to try to raise some money. We changed the date on that. We'll get some flyers to everybody on that. It's gonna be November 16th. So if you wanna play, I think it's just a, it can be a fun thing if y'all wanna do it every year. It can be a great thing to get, you know, all the city employees, a bunch of them out there to see the golf course and socialize with the different vendors. We're trying to get some vendors out there to sponsor some teams and boards, any of the different boards the city has. Obviously, the mayor and council, everybody that wants to come out there. Could be just a good networking type of deal, team building. So hopefully we can raise some money and get everybody a little bit of money for Christmas, so.
What day did you say that would be on?
It'll be the 16th, Saturday, the 16th at nine o'clock. We have a deadline on the 12th to get your teams in. And we'll have a flyer. We just finished making some changes with the flyer. We was gonna try to do it this weekend, but the weather's bad, so we pushed it another week. Gives us more time to get it together, so. But we'll make sure everybody gets all the information on that. We had some damage out on the golf course. Was it Saturday night? Wind come through and blew about four or five trees down, a lot of, a lot of debris everywhere. So it was like a small tornado hit us, so we're gonna spend a lot of time cleaning that up. But other than that, it's all really good, so we just couldn't be happier. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, library, this is her.
I emailed you our fancy statistics sheet to save on some paper. All of our stats pretty much are down, which is not uncommon for this time of year. We're also dealing with being open eleven fewer hours every week, so that is gonna absolutely affect our statistics. And in continuing praise of Terry Lamar, in October, we had our cemetery tour. We had sixteen people attend, and it was very, very highly rated by everybody that I've talked to. They all had a really great time, and Terry had lots and lots of information about everybody, all the important figures in the cemetery, so thank you for doing that for us. It was, it was really great. It was a great program. So on the statistics that you have, what you don't see are, I will brag on us, our meeting room count for October is almost six hundred uses. And meeting rooms for us, that's our two big meeting rooms, our four study rooms and our maker space. So the four study rooms are in constant use, especially now that we're not open from nine until eleven. A lot of our epic teachers and homeschool groups would come in and use those rooms to do individual lessons and to do tutoring, and so now they're, they're kind of scrambling all over the building because we're not open those two hours that they were expecting or they're used to being there. So of the almost six hundred uses, five hundred and fifty of those were in our study rooms, which is just phenomenal. But it does make it, if you have a day and time that you're gonna need a study room, you should reserve it because a first come, first served thing is you're just not gonna get it. And then as far as programming's come, that's coming up, storytime on Wednesday at 11:30 and 1:30. My staff decided to split our storytime. It was at 10:30, which had been at 10:30 since the dawn of time. And obviously, it's not that, at 10:30 now. So if you remember, when you had littles, nap time is a big thing. So the little ones tend to nap in the later afternoon so they can come to the 11:30, but the older ones tend to nap in the morning, and so they come to the 1:30. So I don't know if that split will last forever. So far, we have attendance to both. We're gonna keep watching it just to see how that goes and if we can sustain staff-wise and attendance-wise two storytimes. I know that in the grand scheme of things, we would like to add an evening storytime and maybe even a weekend storytime, but that is not anytime gonna happen soon because we shall have a staff or the hours at this point. And then Thursday at 5:30, we have a grown-up movie night. We're gonna watch Planes, Trains, and Automobiles, a classic film from the mid-eighties. And then also, if you want to be part of supporting your library, you're welcome to come to our Friends of the Library meeting at six o'clock. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I just want to say thank you for highlighting the use of the library. I know that when the city's in the financial straits that it's in, that it's easy to overlook something that's probably not as critical of a service as far as an emergency to somebody. But the value that the library brings to the community, I think, can't be understated. And the use that you show in that is very helpful for us.
Well, and everybody thinks that they know what libraries do, and generally, they think that libraries are a repository for books, and all we're doing is dealing books. That's not the case. We are an internet resource for people. As you can see with our internet access, we are a cultural resource for people. We are a socializing resource, especially for older adults. We are a job resource. You can come and use our databases to build up your resume, to search for jobs, to train yourself for a job. If you're a veteran, we can help you navigate the VA system because that's a beast. I'm trying to think what else. Basically, if you have a need, the library's job is to connect you to that need. No, we're not gonna respond if somebody kicks in your door at two o'clock in the morning because that's not, that's not our mission. Our mission is to improve the quality of life of our community, and we do it really well.
I agree.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Frank, Parks and Cemetery.
October was actually a pretty busy month between all the events, parties in the park, whether they were plant parties or just regular birthday parties. It seemed like every weekend in October, there was, you know, a couple of events going on. Been staying busy, just keeping us odd jobs with the weather. Got started on early maintenance with mowers since we weren't mowing. This time of year, the guys appreciate this week after when we start shutting down, getting ready to start winterizing things because we, we, the last few weeks, we've been getting hit hard with vandalism. Both bathrooms at Whittaker and Centenia, we had to shut down for a couple of days between either graffiti or even a fires, just. And so they're glad this was the week we start shutting down, so. So that kept us busy. But other than that, just, you know, going along, cemetery's doing fine. So far, two guys, so far, so good. So they got plenty of, even when they don't mow, they got plenty of dirt, water, trees, you know, they stay busy, so. Any questions?
Can we put security cameras at the parks to stop, try to catch these?
We've, we've looked into it. Just need to go that step farther and actually budget. I've even, I kind of talked to the police once when they were building their new buildings to tie in, like with cameras. I do have like trail cams scattered around.
Do you really?
Yeah.
Good. So who would run those? Would it be parks or would it be the police that would run?
The trail cams, we just do.
No, but official cams.
Yeah, we, oh, the cameras, well, it'd be one of those for, at one, a few years ago, they put up a sample camera, and it did, it did tie in to the police.
It was prior to me taking over, but yeah, I mean, it would be better if we tied it to our system because they can, somebody can monitor that.
And that's when we were kind of going, but it just kind of fell apart. That's when they were getting their new building built, I believe, and it just didn't happen.
Can you bring the council some cost estimates to put cameras in the parks?
You give a trail, you don't give them, Kevin, he can give them a job in.
It's gotta be cheaper than continuing to clean up after these vandals all the time.
Yeah, because, and then, because back to the thing, your bathrooms are ninety-five or happens most. If you get cameras right there around the restroom. No, no. No, but at least you can track who goes in and out.
Exactly.
Yeah.
With the timestamp, you are able to.
And I, this past weekend, they've shut down, so they graffiti the outside. So that could have been caught, you know, if we'd had cameras.
There's some streaming cameras you can get too with monthly subscriptions that are pretty recent. I mean, the upfront camera cost might be a little bit, but the monthly streaming cost on it's not very much. If, if there's an internet connection out there, I don't know if there is or not.
Doorbell cameras.
Yeah.
So.
And good job on Halloween. Your park, Whittaker, was more than full.
Yeah, it was, I mean, I used to see getting used that much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Police and Shelter, chief.
It was a steady month, kind of the bigger deals. We had a couple stolen cars. They recovered, and then the break-in at the liquor store. They got broke in through the window, stole their cigarettes. And then within a week, somebody called in a shoplifter over here at Dollar General. They get in a foot pursuit of the guy, and then they find a bunch of the stolen property from the liquor store, time into that. Several other burglaries around town that had been hit, so. Halloween was a big hit. There was a lot of people out. I don't know if anybody was downtown, but it was packed by the busiest I've seen it. The weather was perfect, but the park, we went by there, went through a lot of candy that night, so. But no, no big incidents to speak of during that deal. Football games are almost over. They do have one more home football game for playoffs. So it was supposed to be, the last one was gonna be Friday, but they are in the playoffs, so we got at least one more home game this year. So it'll be the first, not this coming week, but the next week, I believe, we'll have another home game, so. Other than that, that's about it.
How'd you find the stolen cars?
Those, I think one was called in. Both of them were called in, and then the one they found was out by the district, and then one of the officers was driving around in parking lots looking for it, found it. The other one, somebody had actually called it in, like this car possibly over this address stolen, so.
I didn't know if maybe the flock cameras helped you out or not.
Not on these.
Okay.
Brought my cheat sheet. So October, we had twenty-three adoptions, sixteen returned to owners. We had a total of twenty-four entags. Right now, I had wrote down forty-four total animals, but that changed by forty-five because one went out and one, and two came in. So forty-five, twenty-seven dogs and sixteen cats.
And one pig.
One pig.
You got a pig. You got rid of it. You got a pig.
But we don't have it on.
She did catch the pig, so.
Well, I think you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
And they're doing a veterans day, yeah, where they're gonna do, deal for veterans, so.
Just this coming weekend.
How do those new pens hold up with the rain and the flooding that I know happens out there?
Okay, so this weekend and this week so far has been a little rough. We're getting through because we got kind of spoiled to our pens outside. The dogs are really spoiled, so they're a little hectic right now. But we're just having to use the back porch to clean. We're just having to do one row at a time, and it's terrible. I hate doing it that way, but we're getting by. We're getting by.
And I do want to give Bruce some props for the funding for the range. He was able to secure that with Cherokee Nation, and he's working with Tyler. Bruce is taking the lead on that, so I do appreciate him pushing that forward with everybody and getting all that done, so we did get the check deposited, so. Thank you.
Thank you. More with Rick Center. Cheezy?
So another, another month behind us. We got, you know, the HVAC unit's been the big ticket item. That finally got installed early last month, right after our last meeting, so that's up and running and seems to be doing well, so we're happy about that. We're in the midst of working on a plan to kind of assess the status of all the others. We have nine units left that need to be replaced at some point in time, so we'll try to get some semblance of where they're at and what we can anticipate. So hopefully during the next, by the next meeting, we'll have something like that. We did a little bit of painting around the perimeter of the pool. I don't know if you're familiar, there's about a ten-inch strip around it, some caulking in between. That was deteriorating, of course, because of all the chemicals and so forth. So we, it was kind of a dull gray, so we painted it blue and filled in the caulking and stuff to kind of spruce that up, so minimize any, any future issues. Membership-wise, we, last month, we had ninety-eight new members. We have four hundred and seventy-five total Cherokee Nation members in that program. We had five hundred and forty-nine people sign up for walking. We have a total of seventeen hundred and fifty-five members, which is down about three and a half percent over the last month. We've been on a little bit of a downturn the last couple of months. which is down about three and a half percent over the last month. We've been on a little bit of a downturn the last couple of months. You know, fall, busy, people busy doing one thing or another possibly, um, but we're gearing up to do some, uh, kind of additional marketing going into the new year, so hopefully, we can recapture some of that. Aquatics, uh, just this last weekend, they hosted a, it's called Fitter Faster, and what they did is, uh, Tina Bilby, who coaches our swim team, brought in, uh, it's a group that you can contract with, and they'll bring in an Olympic swimmer. And so, they did, and they, they worked with kids on, on more competitive advanced techniques, and so, um, they did. They brought a, a guy in named Ali. I remember it, it's about, Velaufa, Velaufa, I believe, is, he's an Egyptian guy, and he's working on becoming a US citizen. And, uh, did a great job. We had ten kids, uh, participate in the program. They said it went on without a hitch, and, and, uh, will probably do it again in another year or so. We had some out of towners from Bartlesville, they're in that swim world, uh, were impressed with what went on and how the thing was run. And so, Tina and Jackie Moyers, our aquatics director, was involved in that as well, so, um, we're happy that, uh, and proud that that happened. We're in the midst of thirty, we had thirty-six private swim lessons last month. Uh, we hosted fourteen public pool parties and, and, uh, three private, so we're off and running there. We're still working on the media. Jess Rieger, our fitness director, is putting stuff out, I don't know if you've seen our Facebook page in the last few weeks. She's done a, uh, Get to Know the Staff Friday, so all of our full-time staff, uh, she's done a bio on them, and, uh, been putting that out just to try to create a little bit of familiarity, I guess you'd say. Pickleball, we just finished up one set of lessons. We'll have another set in, uh, in, uh, Jan, starting January seventh. We, we did get, uh, so, we've been working on this active shooter, uh, intruder type notification deal. So, last week, they put in, they got our devices in, and we've got a couple of buttons in strategic locations, so if we were to encounter an active shooter, and, uh, we'll be putting up some, some information to go along with that, that our members can see, and then there's some protocol that our staff would follow as well. So, we'll start doing a little training on that, so, uh, other than that, we're just kinda cruising along. Any questions?
Rec Center's looking pretty good.
Not too bad.
Could also mention that we got the, uh, renewal check from Cherokee Nation.
Yeah, yeah, we got, uh, twelve thousand dollars, uh, yesterday to go to the Cherokee Nation program. The chief was supposed to make it, but he got tied up, and, uh, looking Chief Warner, uh, was there and, uh, turned him around a little bit, and, uh, so they've given sixty-seven thousand dollars so far for that program, so they're, they're funding their half, and, you know, we're starting to make some money on the deal, so.
Well, they mentioned that they were really impressed that when we started that, we had, what, about a hundred?
About a hundred and fifty.
And now we're six hundred.
Six hundred, kinda, it fluctuates a little bit month to month, but, uh, it's, it's been averaging from four seventy-five to five hundred the last three or four months, I think, so. So, yeah, that was good, and they, they've said they're gonna model that, use that model with some of their other, instead of going out and building a facility like the Rec Center, they can, they can do that kind of thing on, and piggyback and so on. They're gonna draw up some formal documents, I think, to implement that in other, other locations that they have, and any other town that might have a YMCA or a Rec Center, so.
That's gonna continue next year?
That's the plan. They've, they've said that they'd like to keep funding it, so.
Awesome. Very, very impressive.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Glenn, Street.
I'm gonna have to actually make a list today. Well, we've got, uh, some of our street repair, we've got, uh, right now down on Will and Wilkerson, we've got a, that intersection down through there. We're repairing that one, uh, had some base, base failure on that, and all the concrete started breaking up, so we've got that one going down. Uh, we've done, uh, two or three pores over on Grove Crest, we've got those. Southeast Tenth, we did another one here the other day on that, we're doing some curb and repair. Northeast Second and, uh, Mill, I don't know if I told you all about that, we had a drainage that fell in over there. We had to go do some repair. We got that one, we got that one closed off, and barric, I think barricades picked up. We've got some blocks down there right now to keep pe, trucks off of it, 'cause it looked like, you could see, it was, it was like an eighteen-wheeler or something. I don't know if it was loaded down or something, but the, uh, the drainage that went across there, part of it was, uh, precast, and then one, one half of it, it just looked like somebody poured a head wall with some rebar, and that's what gave way, but, uh, we've come back and I think it, it oughta, it oughta hold up for quite a long time, uh, the way we've got it fixed. Drainage, uh, Park and South Mill, on the west side of the road, we got that drainage cleaned out. If I come to find out, we're trying to figure out why all the water stuff stems through there, but I guess the, uh, utilities found a leak somewhere down through there, and that's why all that water's not drying up down through there, so hopefully, they'll get that fixed, and we can get in there and get, uh, get the rest of it cleaned out. Right now, there's still a lot of silt, but it's, it's so mushy that you can't hardly scoop it, it just wants to run everywhere, so, uh, we'll get that done. Uh, we had some trees down, uh, Southeast Second Hogan, we had one over there, went and cut up and hauled off on, uh, Southeast Fourth Street. Wanna do that. Give a shout to Emergency Management and the, and the, uh, the Fire Department, they come by and they called it on Sunday morning, and I was already headed out to the church building, and so I got one of our guys in town, but they've already had somebody up there with a chainsaw already starting to cut it, so. My thing was, I'm gonna tell them that if they cut it, they're gonna have to haul it off next time. They done the easy part, they didn't do the hard part. Just tell them I'm kidding, PK. Okay, all right, all right. I'll be there in the morning. Signs, we've got some, uh, on northeast side of town, I don't know if you all have noticed, but, uh, not, and, uh, Jeremy's aware of it, they're working on it, but we've had a new, uh, I don't know if you wanna call it a gang move-in, or gang signs, BHB. They done about four hundred dollars worth of sign damage painting on them, and we've got some replaced. I've got some more, some more signs ordered, uh, so if you see some purchase orders comes in with some extra signs, that's what they're all for, is we're having to. Some of them, they're, they're, uh, children that play, school zone, stop signs, you know, if they were just right on the backside, it'd be all right. We, you know, might leave some, it's not bad, but they're, they're taking a big toll on those. Gate repair, we did some repair down there on, uh, down at Whittaker Park. Somebody went through here the other day and, and pushed it open with a pickup, and so we went and cut all the, it was all caddy-wamped. So, we went down there today and got it, got it repaired, we, so we're gonna go back and get them all painted and put some more, uh, reflectors, uh, tape and stuff on them, I don't know, it, it looked, it didn't look like it was just hit, I think it was just pushed open. But anyway, in case somebody said, "Well, you know, I couldn't see it," but we're gonna be fixing that. The new pickup that we got, we called and they said it's still gonna be around mid-December before it gets in. And over off, uh, South Elliott, there at Fifteenth and Elliott, had a lady I know, she calls, usually every time we get a big rain, uh, down through there, and I told her that what has happened, there's gotta be something that's blocking the pipe, I don't know if it, if the inside's rusted out. We've taken our, our, uh, spray rig down there, and we've tried to, to open it up, whatever it is, but there's something inside there that's not, the water will flow, it just takes a while for it to get down. And, and I, I told her, I said, "Well, we're, we're waiting on, we got a drainage project that's coming up in through there." And, uh, but I don't wanna have to tear out, tear out that intersection, that street, put new pipe in, and then come back and report, and then they're gonna turn right around and tear it out again, so I mean, that's, you know, probably five, six thousand dollars that we don't need to be spending on something that, eventually, we're gonna get around to, to get fixed anyway.
Mayor, I might ask, do you know where we're at, where Dale's at on that project?
On the?
South Elliott.
The South Elliott one, we haven't taken to the table, we just got the street one for First Street wrapped up.
Okay.
So, we haven't given them the move forward on that yet.
But here, uh, near future, we're gonna be, uh, down to the alleys, but we're gonna be, like I said, be running a sweeper, we're getting it, everything changed on it. Getting ready, we'll be sucking ditches and, uh, trimming all the streets here for too much longer, so, other than that, we're trying to stay busy.
You keeping your jetter busy?
My wa, yeah, well, yeah, that jetter, we, we used it up there on, uh, on Fifteenth Street, and I don't know what's, I mean, it's just, we, we worked up there for three or four hours, and there's, you can't see daylight through it, but there's waters going through somewhere, but it just, it just drains slowly. But, uh, yeah, anywhere we've had a, uh, a plugged up problem, you know, that we couldn't just raw it out with a pipe or whatever, like I said, we take it down there, and it's been, it's been working good.
Good.
So.
That was a good, that was a good purchase, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's a... Trying to think what, we was talking about using for something here the other day, and I can't remember. Oh, yeah, well, the drainage over on Southeast Second, we thought, when it, it fell in, we was gonna, it was piled up full of dirt, and we thought we were gonna have to raw that thing all the way out down through there, but it, it just went so far to stop, so we didn't get to try it on them great big old pipes that went up underneath of it, but, uh, yeah, that, that's, that's been a blessing, 'cause it sure saves crawling down in them ditches, them pipe, and I'm getting too old for that, so.
I did get a compliment from resident on Northeast Third Place, that they had four inches of water in their rain gauge and no standing water on their road. So, they wanted to make sure we passed that on.
Well, that's good, I accept it. Sometimes it just takes just to walk out there with a rake or shovel and just hit, hit the end of your pipe, and, you know, especially with the leaves, it seems like when it's either either dry or, or too wet, we usually get the rain when leaves start falling off, and that plugs everything up, so.
And that was where we graded that street down after that last project.
Yeah, so. Anything else?
Just a commendation on your response time, when I told you about the potholes on Ninth. That was a very short time span from the time I notified you to the time that it was fixed. And I know the, uh, the resident in who, whose home is right next to it appreciated, appreciated you.
Well, like I said, we try to do it every, you know, Pothole Friday is what I call it, and we try to get out there and do it, and somebody, I mean, and eventually, we're gonna get around to getting all that, that, those repaired, especially on the concrete, it's just, oh, yeah, and also, uh, J, as of January first, concrete's going up another eight dollars a yard, so that's gonna put it like at a hundred and, a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and fifty-six dollars a yard, so. Which is not good, so.
No, thank you, buddy.
Thank you. Uh, City Clerk, Courtney.
Well, um, obviously, I am a little behind on things right now. Sorry for getting the POs to you guys as the meeting starts. I had to sign them off, so, just know that. Anyway, Lisa's obviously ditched me, and I know she's watching this, 'cause she still likes to keep up with us, and she's still helping me, so that's great. But she ditched me. Um, we got a new court clerk temp also, she started Monday, and she's doing fantastic so far. I'm hoping after watching the meeting tonight, she doesn't ditch me, but we'll see.
Your previous one went downstairs, right?
Yes, yeah, she was able to get benefits, and so she took an offer from someone that could give her benefits. We filed fifty-seven court cases last month, and we issued a hundred and thirty-two warrants. We took four hundred and seventy-two payments at the cash register or on the phone. We entered Darla, Darla entered four hundred and seventy-three purchase orders. We issued thirty-seven permits and closed twenty-three permits. I wrote payrolls, dot, 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 going. That's a process. Anyway, we also got a new, our new credit card company, that's all live. We can take payments online now, it's on our website now, which has been incredible. I can't wait to get the animal shelter and everybody else on board with that, that way it cuts down on the calls that we get in our office. That's gonna be the biggest help, so, that's good. You guys know that you guys got your August financials out. September's almost done, Lori finished up the last few issues there, and I have a few little entries to do. Hopefully, that'll be wrapped up and sent to you guys pretty soon. That's all I got.
Thank you. All right, Item Five, Consent Agenda. Do we have any items that we'd like to pull off of that?
C and D?
You said, you said C and D?
C and D.
A, B, G, L, N.
Are there any you wanna leave on?
Yes, the ones that don't have consent, I mean, don't have a packet.
How about I?
I and J.
Yeah. Don't leave, what is?
You said N?
J.
Chris, did you say N or M?
N, as in nor.
So, I have E, F, H, K, and M to approve, correct? Okay, do you have a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion from Beshear and a second from Choya.
Are you ready for that? Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gonthea?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Okay, Item A, Approved Minutes of the September twenty-third, twenty-four Special Counsel Meeting.
Motion.
I have a motion for Brown and a second from Shropshire.
I, I have a question. When did the packet come out showing this, so that we could double-check and read it?
The packet was posted on the website yesterday.
Yesterday?
I assume at six.
What, what time?
Um, I'm not sure, I worked late yesterday. Would you like me to see if there's a timestamp?
Because I, I know when I went to bed, it wasn't there, and I have not had a chance to read any of those items that I've asked to be removed, and so I can't approve what I haven't had a chance to read.
Okay.
I think the most recent revision that's submitted on the website is one fourteen on the, no, I'm sorry. Is it five, uh, seven oh two? That was yesterday.
The revisions aren't really the agenda, though.
Yeah, the last time the website was modified was yesterday at seven oh two, so it was posted at seven oh two PM yesterday.
Specifically on Item A, that was one I had asked previously, that was for you to add the, the people that were in the crowd that night, and I saw that that was done, so.
Yeah.
For that specific one, I, I can speak for the council, if that's, if this specific agenda item is in question, I, I checked it, and it seemed to have everybody listed on there, and that was the only addition that I remembered needing to be made to those meetings, or those minutes. The rest of them I don't know about, but that one specifically, I know I'd asked to be corrected, and I know it was, so.
Further discussion on that? Call for the vote?
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gonthea?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Item B, Approved Amending Minutes Previously Adopted From the October one, twenty twenty-four Regular Meeting To Correct Item Eight, or Five H, Amending The Total Transferred Amount From Two Hundred and Twenty-three, Two Fifty-Nine Thirty-Three To One Seventy-Four Nine Seventy-Seven And Eighty-Cents.
Motion.
No motion from Beshear?
Second.
Second from Brown?
So, I'm sure you guys are about to ask, uh, why the change is there. Number one, I calculated it incorrectly because of the way the spreadsheet's set up. It had, it didn't have all the things in there, so that's corrected, and then the additional, um, correction that I had to do, I believe I mentioned it to you guys last council meeting, where two of the employees had to be paid out an additional check, because it was messed up, calculated for their pension. So, that is the actual final number after everything's been paid out. Everybody's received everything, there's nothing additionally coming out.
So, you're saying the one seventy-four nine seven seven eighty is the savings?
That is the total that will be transferred to the?
Reserve.
Yeah, the reserve account.
Further discussion? Call for the vote?
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gonthea?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Item C, Approved Minutes Of The October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Special Counsel Meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Motion from Beshear, second from Lamar. Discussion? Call for the vote?
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gonthea?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Epstein.
Beshears?
Yes.
Item D, Approved Minutes Of The October fifteen, twenty twenty-four Meeting With The Correction Of A Scrivener's Error, And Item Five D, As The Agenda Read, Ordinance Changing And Amending Zoning Classification From Commercial Restricted, CR, To Residential Duplex, RD. Corrected Language Reads, Ordinance Changing And Amending Zoning Classification From Agriculture LEG To Commercial Automotive Recreation, CAR.
Motion.
A motion from, uh, Shropshire?
Second.
Second from Beshear? Discussion? Call for the vote?
Trammell?
Yes.
Gonthea?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Epstein.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Epstein.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item G? Um, item G, approve increasing recreation center facility rental fees.
Motion.
A motion from Beshear?
Second.
Second from Shropshire, discussion? Call for the vote?
Gonzi?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Beshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Item I, approve allowing Dennis Bowman to place a golf simulator in the back of the golf, in the back of the cart building. The equipment will be purchased by Bowman as a teaching tool.
Motion.
Motion from Brown, second from Beshear. Discussion?
I have no problem with this other than I think that, as I have said many times, the city has a bad problem with not looking out for the city's best interest. And I think if we're going to allow you to use the space, if you were going to use the space anywhere else, you would expect to pay a rental fee. And I think that we should expect the same out of you to pay a rental fee to use the space. I, I agree with Ms. Graybill. I think she pointed that out at the park meeting. And I would take the same stance.
Mr. Bowman, I understand that you're going to get the money from this rental.
Well, I use it as a teaching facility, so.
You're getting the money though.
Right, yeah, and I invest the money to, to do it. It's a pretty good investment to have an indoor teaching area. Uh, the area golf courses don't charge, I've talked to the other pros. They don't get, charge them any fees to, you know, they provide a place for them to teach. It's, uh, you know, teaching in the golf business helps the regular golfer from getting upset and quitting the game. And it also gives us a place to teach beginner golfers. So the teaching aspect in golf is a big part of retaining golfers and acquiring new golfers. So, uh.
What would the charge per session be for each use of the?
Well, the, the equipment is very expensive.
I mean, what do you charge?
So what, what, what do I charge? So, uh, my, my fee would be like a hundred dollars for an hour lesson on the simulator. The cost of the equipment total, all in, you're looking at about sixty-five thousand dollars. So, and that's kind of standard amongst, uh, area golf professionals. So, you know. Other golf courses provide places for their pros to teach indoors and outdoors. And that's all I'm asking. I can put it in my house, you know, I can put it in my garage and, and teach there. It's, that's not a big deal. It's just a lot better service to the golfers to have it at the golf course. And, uh.
How big of a screen or whether, are, are you hitting the ball, a real ball at a screen?
Yes, yeah, you're hitting a real ball off of a mat into a screen. The screen's, uh, seventeen feet wide and it's got netting. It's, it's a lighting's got to be special lighting, uh, for the simulator and everything. So it's a special, you know, a lot of technology in that little small space.
Have you already purchased the machine?
No, no, I have a machine that I have purchased, I've purchased like part of it, about a third of it. I have a TrackMan that I use outdoors, uh, right now during my teaching. And so that's part of it. It's a, that's about a twenty-five thousand dollar purchase right there. So the other part's about forty to forty-five for the screen, the mats, the lights, the computer that runs it all and everything. There's a licensing fee, so i- it's a big investment. And, uh, like I said, it's more, you know, we have people right now that leave the golf course or leave Tulsa or leave Pryor and drive to Tulsa to go to the simulator. So I'm, you know, trying to provide them a better service here rather than people leaving and going to other places. So.
Where is it going to be set up at?
In the very back quarter of the cart building. That way we can actually, you know, when the weather's bad, hit balls outdoors. Uh, you can actually swing, you know, keep, when the wind's so bad, you can't get outside. You actually swing, open the garage door and hit balls out the door or hit them into the, the screen, so.
Will the facility that's in have to have, uh, be climate controlled, heat and air?
It doesn't have to be, but I would probably would, I would probably buy a, a mini split and put in there, something like that to, to keep it little, little warmer in the wintertime. It doesn't take much heat in, in a building. You're just mainly trying to get out of the elements.
If, if you were to be charged a fee for, uh, rent or whatever and possibly to pay for your electricity that it would use or, or however that would be, that money wouldn't come back to the general fund. It would go there to the golf course, correct?
It'd stay in the golf course. All the money stays at the golf course.
It wouldn't be a general fund, uh.
Right.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't raise our general fund up.
No.
Now, if I understand him right, it's a personal income to him.
It is, but I'm saying if we did, if we did decide that we were going to charge a rental fee per month or whatever, that money, we, we just got to, we just got to realize that money won't come back to the general fund. It'll stay at the golf course for, uh, keeping the golf course up and everything.
Why?
Yeah, why wouldn't it come back?
Spending money out of, out of the golf course account for this?
Yeah, it wouldn't come over for sure, but I think you could probably direct it either way.
Into the general fund? Could you?
Yes.
Does the general fund pay the utilities?
Is Mike still here?
No.
The, the golf course pays the utilities.
The utilities are paid out of the golf course fund.
Right.
For the city, not C M S.
When instructor at the rec center does something for personal stuff, don't they have to rent the space as well?
I don't know that they pay a fee to rent the space, but I do know that they sign a contract.
I think there's a.
With us that they are going to be, I, they might actually.
There's a rental fee for some of the classes they put on.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, swimming and things like that and teaching swimming and stuff.
I'm all for the idea. I, I genuinely am. I'm probably the only one up here that's a member of the golf course, so I'll probably be the one that's using it more than anybody else up here. I just think that we have to look out for the city's best interest to some degree. And, um, I don't know that it has to be an astronomical amount. I just feel like we need to do, the city needs to take care, it's the city's building at the end of the day. And if you were, I'm not saying you can't put it in your own garage, but if you were going to go rent space anywhere else, you're going to pay a rental fee somewhere else. And I understand the advantage of having it at the golf course, having it available. And, and I don't think that it has to be anything that breaks the bank, but I do feel like it needs to be something.
You said I wouldn't probably mind paying for the electric, you know, but if, there's no sense in making an investment if there's no money to be made, you know?
That's kind of the way I look at it.
Yeah.
For the city.
Yeah.
There's no need for us to provide you something for you to make money at. We're the ones having the money problem. The golf course is doing good. I have no problem with golf course. It's a success. We're looking at you making personal money from the city's use and I don't like that.
Well, you know, if, if a golf course is going to be successful, they have to have a position, position out there for it to be successful. In a few years or whatever, I, when I leave, the more attractive position you have, the better chance you have of hiring a qualified person to continue that success out there. If the position is not very good, then you're going to have a hard time getting candidates out there to fulfill that position.
Well, it sounds like you're doing a good, you got a good crowd and a good, uh, participation in it. So if we don't do this machine thing, you're still going to do, it's like you have been doing, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah, golf course will keep on doing.
You're just not going to make any money yourself.
Well, and it's a, there's a, a, an attractive part to keeping people in Pryor instead of going to Tulsa. Because they're going to go to the simulators when the weather gets bad. You want them to go to Tulsa, you want to keep them here in Pryor.
Well, if we're not making any money, it's not benefiting us. But if they have to pay gas to go to Tulsa, we, and they stop and buy snacks at the convenience store, we'll get a little tax revenue. I mean.
Well, it'll benefit the golf course by keeping them there. Because there's a lot of times as we, as I teach, I, you know, people come, you know, you don't realize, people come quite a ways. A lot of people from Muskogee, places from Arkansas that I give lessons to, they drive into Pryor. And then there's a lot of times, hey, I do a lesson, the weather's kind of iffy, we can do it indoors and then go out and play. You know, pay, pay, pay the golf course fee.
Well, I, I understand that from a marketing strategy as well as from a training. That's not the issue. The issue is, you know, there's going to be a cost to the city that we're not going to get back for utilities, et cetera, wear and tear. And you're going to be making a profit, but the city is actually going to ultimately not only not make money, but through wear and tear, et cetera, they're not going to benefit from the actual use of it.
You know, there's, I'm not sure what you call wear and tear, but, uh, you know, as far as utilities, like I said, the only thing out there would be electric. And I said, you know, be willing to pay for that. I don't think that's a very large bill for the city anyway, but I'd be willing to pay for it just so there is zero cost to the city. But the benefits will be having people get to play our golf course instead of driving to Tulsa. Because there's a lot of them going to take lessons and they go play. They figured out their golf swing, they want to go play.
A couple of other things, and, and I'm just asking, if you, uh, if you have people there and let's say, God forbid, they hit a golf ball that bounces back and hits them in the head or something, I don't know. But, uh, is there, is there insurance?
Yeah, we have insurance. Course management system has insurance.
The whole course, uh, so that very part of that?
The insurance, yeah.
Okay. And what if somebody didn't need lessons? Let's say they just, on a snowy day or something, they just wanted to go out and, and use the, the training. A, uh, is it going to be another hundred dollars for them to go and hit golf balls?
Typically, you know, people rent those for about fifty bucks, forty to fifty bucks for somebody to go out and, and just hit their own, do it, do it themselves. It, it populates all kinds of numbers that they can see, you know, on their golf swing and ball spin and swing planes and all that.
So it wouldn't be a hundred dollars every, every time? That's just for training?
Right, yeah, just the testing part of it.
So to negate what, it seems like the concern up there is the money's going to be going to you instead of the city. To negate this, could we not purchase this out of capital outlay for the golf and then just consider it part of your regular business?
Well, the problem is going to be if he's charging a lesson on the, on his private side, how are we going to know how much of that we're going to collect? He's going to, in that instance, I would ask city pay a rental fee for using the equipment and then that's.
Well, no.
We're still working in the same issue.
No, 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 my point was is if, if it becomes capital outlet, it becomes city, the city's property. And then all of the revenues from using that would go back into the city.
Right, but when he does lessons, he doesn't teach lessons for the city. He tells lessons for Dennis Bowman. Therefore, if he's using the equipment, at some point, I would say it's our equipment. So therefore, we would want the same rental rate or whatever to him. I, is, is there a separate meter out there for electric on that specific part? So that part could be pushed off to, to know.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't. I, I know free is what you're wanting, but I, in my mind, just even a couple hundred dollars a month is not a, a heavy lift, I don't think, to ask for. Um, it may be more than what you want to do for your profit wise, but in, in my mind, that if you're renting a small amount of space, a couple hundred dollars a month seems like it would be appropriate for renting any other space. Uh, I don't have a commercial building, but I know that I have a general idea about where rental fees are at and.
What if you went to a storage? What if you went to a storage, uh, facility? It's, it's at least that high and for something that big, seventeen feet wide.
When you start counting electricity and everything like that, because most of your storage isn't going to be climate controlled, so.
But.
I, I just.
Two hundred dollars would be two lessons for you. And how many lessons do you think you'll probably have them?
I don't know, you know, because I do them all outside now, you know?
Do you have several, I mean?
As far as to, in the wintertime indoors, but.
Well, I know you don't have it indoors, but I mean, do you have, do you, do you have several lessons a month?
Until the weather gets bad.
Okay, okay. So that two hundred wouldn't kill you, right?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't kill me. I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'd do it though, you know? I'd just say, hey, we just won't do it, you know?
Well, I figured you'd probably have eight or ten a week anyway.
Yeah, no, I don't do that much.
Oh, you don't? Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, no.
Well, if you had a place so that somebody could come in and didn't need a lesson, and let's say, you said it'd be like fifty bucks for an hour for them to swing at balls? Okay, uh, would you have several people in the wintertime when it was bad that would use that facility?
I think we would, but I, you know, it's kind of uncharted territories. We haven't never, you know? So it takes a lot of marketing. You got a big capital investment. You got to market it. You got to get people out there. You got to take care of them. You got to turn it on, turn it off. You know, there's a lot to it.
Okay.
So.
Wonder what the one at Buffalo Run charges to play on it? They got a simulator there.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they charge on this. Most people would charge about fifty bucks to, to do it.
If anybody uses it, just goes and plays with it, they're going to pay fifty bucks an hour or?
Yeah, it's, it's typically an hour, forty, some, some are down to forty an hour, but, you know. So if you invest, you know, sixty-five thousand dollars, how long it fit, you know, how many people do you got to run through there every year to get your money back? You know, it's, it's a chunk, it takes a lot, you know?
Mayor, what's the maintenance upkeep?
There's a lot of maintenance. The screens wear out, so about every two years, depending on your usage, you have to replace a screen.
And how much does one of those cost?
Oh, uh, the, the good impact screens, uh, you know, don't quote me on this, but I think they're right around seven, eight thousand dollars.
And do, do these run into the issue like, for example, a lot of signs that businesses put out, the light blocks that are in the signs, after ten years, they don't make them anymore. So now you're stuck with, uh, obsolete part after so many years and then you have to buy a.
Yeah, it's upgrading, right. Now, TrackMan is a pretty, that's the brand that, of launch monitor that I have that gives me all the data. Their, their company's pretty big and they keep everything going pretty good from what I've seen over the years.
Mr. Bowman, it looks like that Buffalo Run charges thirty dollars for an hour.
Thirty dollars, right, yeah, so even less than, you know, everybody's, you know.
Patricia Island's forty, I know.
Forty, yeah, yeah, they're forty.
I know.
So everybody's probably thirty, forty, some might be up to fifty, I don't know.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I have about three or four questions.
Okay.
Dennis, would it, is this also going to require, since it is a big, huge computer, is it going to need some sort? The machine's a computer.
It's just a regular.
Right.
Computers all you use.
So you're going to need Wi-Fi or internet run out to the facility?
We already have Wi-Fi or internet out there for our time clock. Our time clock is inside the building. That's where the guys open the cart building and clock in and out. So that's already there.
Okay. And then for Chase, uh, since this is a private piece of equipment that is expensive, sixty-five thousand dollars roughly? If the facility, there was a storm damage to the building, uh, fire, et cetera, is the city responsible for that piece of equipment or is that? How, how does that work on a liability for us?
Depending on however you guys do it, I think we'd do some sort of a waiver for him. He's putting it out there. He's also responsible for the building, so we take care of it. But for weather or something, it'd be an insurance claim. So what we probably do is to allow, put it out there, have him waive something like that. And if he wants to, he can get his own insurance for his track.
I have insurance already on my track, man. If they got stolen, it's already been through the insurance, yeah.
Okay, and then for mayor, two questions. One is, what did the park board, what's the park board's position on this?
Park board passed it up to you. There was, uh, Ms. Graybill actually had some of the same questions that, uh, Chris and Bruce passed, um, but they passed it on through.
Was there any major discussion about it there?
Uh, I think the biggest discussion was just from Ms. Graybill about her concerns of it being private equipment from, uh, on, from Mr. Bowman on city property, so.
Okay, and then what is your position as the mayor?
My position? Well, you know, I, I understand, um, I understand that we use the, uh, we use the, the training. You know, your certified P G A, right?
Yes, sir, class A P G A.
Class A P G A. And that is a, a tool that we use as a city to get people out there, to get them on the, on the thing. I think I have, I do have some concerns about the cost of private investment for you versus, um, the revenues you get back. Um, I'd have to ask, how far are you from retirement? If you had to ballpark, we're not going to hold you to it.
Yeah, if everything keeps going good, maybe three or four years.
So in three or four years, um, at a hundred dollars of the whack, I, I think that's going to be hard for you to make back.[1762.71]
Yeah, and that's where, it's still even four years down the road, if I do invest that money, I would maybe sell it to the person taking over. It'd be theirs, whoever's gonna take over, or just sell it on the open market, you can buy them on the open market, you know, just put them out there, so, whatever.
So this would be on new equipment?
Yes.
Can you let the mayor finish his opinion, please?
Um, I think really what we need to do is we need to look at the, you know, the liability factor a little more in depth, along with the legalities of how the city wants to look at, um, private, whether it's you or the rec center, so you brought up the rec center, um, we need to look at those con, did you bring that?
Sorry.
Um, whoever brought it up, we'll, we'll, we'll give it to whoever, that the, uh, you know, the enterprise funds, if we're using private equipment or we're using private time, um, we need to look at the investment that the city is losing on that. So, you know, if, if we've got, you know, there are, there are perks to being the rec director, right? You gotta go swimming when you, you know, while you're on the clock or whatever, I don't know how Mike does that. But the idea is, um, you know, if, if they're having a party, they, they should be, uh, even if it's at a, a, a different, a different rate, they should be paying for that. Um, and I think, uh, I think we just need to look at that a little, a little more in depth, um, and, and, and see where we're at with, how those contracts are gonna read going forward with the use of personal, personal equipment, um, used for city, city stuff. I mean, we have, we have individuals in the city that use their personal vehicle, right, to go on trips. You know, I don't know how, how similar that is in, in perspective to you guys, but, uh, when they have, we had this, uh, I believe it was this week, didn't we have the conversation about the insurance, um, for personal vehicles?
It's in the purchasing policy.
That those, those personal vehicles are still required to cover their personal insurance, um, you know, so I think we need to look at that and see.
You, you said, there's other city golf courses do this for, uh?
Yeah, at Sand Springs, the municipal golf course, real similar to ours, they provide one for the golf professional right there.
So the city provides that?
Yes.
Does the city make the money off of it or does the professional make the money?
The professional does, to my understanding.
But the city provides the?
Yes, they provide the facilities.
Do they, do they get paid for the use of the machine to the city and then the instructor's time be separate, you know, whereas, if the city purchased the equipment, they get the revenue from the use of the equipment versus, you know.
But you've also got a city employee that's doing it, so if it was our equipment, it would be a different, different game, I mean.
Mayor, I don't agree with you a lot, but I think I agree with you this time, maybe we need to look this over and talk about it some more.
Just for clarification though, the individual privately bought the machine, put it on there, on the city of Sand Springs, uh, golf course and uses it?
That's my understanding, I can call him and get clarification on that.
And I'm curious what they would have done, their, their city would have done, uh, just because of the legality of it and, you know, making sure we're fair across the board, like the rec center individuals using that and having to rent out, I mean, I have no problem with. That actually sounds pretty cool, cause I don't play golf and I'm terrible at it anyway.
So legality, anything that has been discussed, you're gonna be okay doing, it will, the form will be different. Anything discussed, I think can be done, whether it's city buys it, whether he buys it, puts it on, I think we can, we can figure out the legality of that without any issue. As far as the simulator, I would encourage to figure out a way to get this done, whatever it is, because I can tell you, I spend several hundred dollars a year by going to Golf Galaxy on rainy days and renting those out.
So you're really one of those. I, I, I'm, like I said, I, I would, I'm probably gonna be one of the ones that goes out there and uses it well, I just think the city needs to get their fair share.
Yeah, and I'm not telling you how, like, but a way to get it here, I think will be beneficial for the city.
And I, I do know you can put it in your garage or anywhere else, but you also have the benefit of being at the golf course where people are going to golf. So if it's set up there, your business, personal business could also benefit from that.
I think if it, I mean, if it were my choice, Dennis, I, I would prefer that the city invest in that, you know, I don't know what, I don't golf and I've never done golf simulators, that said, um, I would, I would think that, I think you find the council probably to be, and I don't wanna speak out of place for anybody, a little more at ease if it were city, city owned.
I, I wanna, sorry, I wanna clarify that it would not be able to, the internet that the time clock uses, it would not be able to be on that same network, so it would have to be something different.
Different network, yeah.
Is there a switch or a drop out there already that should be pretty easy?
Yeah, that, the network that the time clocks are connected to are secure though, it can't be connected to that. Because it's not city.
Would, would you be opposed if we didn't take any action and just recommended that you and Zach kinda get together maybe and propose something else back to us?
Yeah, not, not at all, uh, a lot of questions need to be answered, but one thing, I look at it from a golf course maintenance standpoint, the revenue the golf course has, our list of other items is more critical than that. That's why, you know, cause I, I do the teaching out there, you know, like I said, I think it would.
Let me ask you another question, if the city buys this, it puts it in, would you give lessons for nothing or would you still charge?
No, I, I have to charge for my lessons, that's part of my.
So there's no need for us to invest that kinda money, when he's gonna charge and make money, I hope.
Well, you would just charge a, a,
Unless we do the.
You would charge a rental fee if he wanted to use the equipment, just, I mean, sure it could be at a reduced rate, but they could discuss that, I would think it'd still be minimal.
Having a simulator, a simulator versus being on the driving range is no different than what we're doing now, it's just one is digital and inside.
Right.
Um, you know, we're still, we're still using the golf course as a whole either way to do those lessons, so.
And I, I would also say that the, the minimal fee that would, if it's rental or if it's getting rental, if we bought the equipment, I, I realize there's a hundred different ways we could take the money, but one of the ways is you could take it back and invest itself back into the golf course with building maintenance fees or anything like that to help cover some of that cost. I'm sure that that's something we can decide later, would you be more comfortable if we took new action for you and Zach to kinda get together and work on a better plan?
Yeah, a hundred, yeah, I'm, I'm all good with that, I'm, I'm not pressing to do this right away. Earlier the better, but, you know, winter coming on, but it's already gonna take, even if I was to order it tomorrow, it's gonna be end of January.
I agree with Chase, I, I would like to see it happen, I just wanna make sure that the city's getting something of it.
I wouldn't bring it to you if I didn't think it was a good deal, and it's like, I mean, there's a lot of people saying, hey, I'd really not drive to Tulsa, you know? And I think that's more things we can do in prior to keep people in prior, I mean, I think it's gonna be better.
Courtney, who had the motion on that?
Brown.
Call amended to take no action.
Rashir's.
Same, on that. Further discussion, if none, we'll call for the vote. That's to take no action.
Uh, Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir's?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Okay, item J, approve increasing the budgeted amount in golf capital outlay. Account four one, four one five, five four one one, from a hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred and eighty-five thousand for the installation of new cart paths. Total budgeted amount includes charity donation grant funds and the amount of twenty-five thousand.
Motion.
A motion from Rashir?
Second.
Second from Lamar.
What is the increase?
Uh, the cost of the, the repairs, um.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, the engineers quotes come back higher and then, you know, we wanna make sure, because when we first set our original budget, our account was a lot lower, but we've had some, you know, by the time we got the end of the year books done and then we've made money this year, our account has grown a lot more than I thought it was. So, uh, the golf course has a lot of money in it, and so I wanna be able to get everything we need done in one shot. I didn't want to come back, alright, let's do another fifty thousand or whatever, another couple cart paths, cause then it's just gonna be more expensive. I just try to get everything we need done in one shot, the golf course has the money to do it, uh, so.
You have somewhere around five hundred thousand in there now?
Uh, pro- probably over that after this last month.
Okay.
We, uh, we had a great month in October, so.
Good deal.
Yeah, we're o- well over that.
How much do you think you're gonna be able to get done with this?
Probably right about, you know, everything we're doing, we, we need to do the parking lot and around the clubhouse and the new roads that we've, you know, don't have any asphalt, so we're probably gonna get about three fifths of it, of the cart paths, everything bad will be done, and then, so.
Asphalt or concrete?
Asphalt, there'll be some places that'll be concrete, but not many.
Okay.
For the most part, I think we're doing about a two inch overlay on.
Some places are two inches, some are inch and a half, just depending on the situation. But it will be in very good shape when we get this done.
And then with that, I will add, one of the things that we're looking at, um, with the Healthy Living Group, the, that, that we're doing a lot of the wayfinding through other things is adding, um, wayfinding signs out there for, for walkability. So some of those intersections on those paths, as we do them, uh, right now, uh, could be a little misleading which way to go if you've not.
I guess some X's out there, turn right, turn left, and straight.
And so these signs would, um, the way it's, it's looking right now, uh, they can pay for those signs, not the golf course, it would be the, the T set, stuff like that. That would say, you know, hole thirteen, this way, two hundred steps.
Do you know how to fix that, not know where to go?
Yeah, play more often, I'm sure.
Exactly.
But, you know, uh, that's, that's one of the things that we'd like to do as we do that, the signage that we put out there would ideally match what we're gonna do in the Kauai district and, and other places throughout town, so. It would be, you know, a larger beautification and, and upgrade project than that, but that would not be, at this point, there's no plan for that to be at a cost to the city.
And with the twenty-five thousand, the city's investment on this is gonna be around two sixty, is that what I'm understanding? Or is it gonna be two eighty-five plus twenty-five for the T's?
He's right, two sixty plus the twenty-five.
Two sixty with what, like a five percent contingency on there?
Yeah, eight percent, I think you put on there.
It's not, it's not over ten, I know that.
Right.
And that was still, Dale still said that that could come back a little lower.
And with the bids come in, we might be able to get three fourths of the golf, golf course done as overlay.
Is Dale or Infrastructure, are they handling the purchasing portion of that, like the bidding and everything?
He'll take care of all that, he'll have, he'll do all the bond sheets and everything.
And the bids are scheduled to be open at city council on the nineteenth.
Is there a way you could sell to actually see what the, uh, accounts sit, each individual account, like how much is in it?
For that specific account number? Yeah, um, Jeremy, I think it was Jeremy, made me aware that the online version's not working right now. Uh, he told me yesterday and I haven't had a chance to look into it, so, so you guys know.
Yeah, but you said there's roughly five hundred thousand?
Little bit more than that, cause she sent me that it was four eighty-three or something and that was through August.
What he's talking about is his entire golf account.
Yeah, our entire cash.
The, the specific line item listed on the agenda, if I type that into Casell, that's not gonna give you what you're looking for. So the most updated number I could give you is what's on the August financials.
Well, basically, there's, there's no pulling from anything that's needed throughout the rest of the fiscal year for the golf course in order to make this happen?
No, no.
Okay. This, this was on the plan already, I think that there's just a cost increase, is that?
Right, right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Yeah, when the, when the.
We've heard capital.
Right.
But with the cost increase, it's not just a cost increase, it's actually additional.
We're doing some additional work just so we can do it all at once.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, we know from past projects that mobility, um, is an issue, so when they have to come out and then come back out again.
Right, exactly.
It's actually, we save quite a bit to, to get them all done and.
Right.
Okay.
And I think, I think it'll be good to have it all done at the same time.
Hundred percent, yeah, be more cost effective.
Save you a lot of grief from.
And, and I know things wear out, especially asphalt, rain, hot, cold, all that stuff, I get it. How long do you think that other forty percent is gonna be before it starts needing upgrade?
So, uh, I've been talking to the engineer about that, uh, and actually talked to a contractor also today about that. Uh, in the spring would be the best time and we'll probably have enough money in the account to do a seal coat on the other. So we'll, wherever we don't, uh, overlay, we'll seal coat it, cause it's pretty good asphalt steel. And he said that would really extend the life of it, and then another thing we're doing is, uh, we're gonna get with the engineer and get a better maintenance plan, that asphalt was done in roughly ninety-five, I'm just guessing. So it's lasted almost thirty years, but getting a little bit better maintenance plan to seal coat it and actually save some money back in a set, in a set account. So every five years it gets a seal coat or whatever the engineer recommends, every ten years we seal coat it to, to extend the life of it. Try to have a better maintenance plan on it.
I don't know that it's ever been done, has it?
No.
Has it got put in?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead and call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir's?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Thank you.
Item L, approve an expenditure in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars to apply concepts for stalker LIDAR L R L to be paid from police equipment capital outlay, four four, four four five, five four two four.
Motion.
We have a motion from Brown?
Second.
Second from Bradshaw. Discussion?
You're getting reimbursed on this, correct?
Correct, highway safety officer grant, it's part of the grant.
Is it gonna be a complete reimbursement?
Yep.
Do you have an idea how long it takes to get reimbursed, is it pretty quick?
She turns in the.
Is that, that was maybe submitted with the rest of the OSHA stuff?
Yes.
Um, it is reimbursed about a month after the month end, so basically if we purchase it now and submit it with the November OSHA stuff, we will get it in January, maybe late December, but likely January.
Probably no later than February or March at the outside.
This fiscal year though, so.
Yeah, definitely this fiscal year.
Is it a handheld?
Yeah, we got three of them, we bought three a while back and we wrote the grant, and I would put that, I don't know where that.
Can you come to the microphone for that?
Yeah. So it's part of the grant, um, the highway safety officer grant was like thirty-six thousand dollars for overtime for traffic enforcement. Um, and part of that grant was that LIDAR that's in there.
I will say, last year, they did not give us money for equipment like this either, we got a lot more.
We got a lot more money this year, plus we got the LIDAR in it, which is hand held radar.
Thank you, further discussion? Call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir's?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes. We're just now through with page one, we're getting there.
It's alright, it's alright, there's a lot of verbiage on page two. Uh, item N, approve an expenditure to McBride McBride in the amount of three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven for work performed regarding Janice Bell versus, uh, Janice Bell versus City of Prior Creek, to be paid from attorney miscellaneous legal expense, oh two, two one one, five three four one.
What is the balance of that account?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'll second it.
Alright, we got a motion from Brown and a second from, uh, Lamar.
Okay, and the balance of the account. I'm just double checking if this is right. It's still loading for me to verify, but it says the account balance is two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Before this comes out?
Correct.
So we would need to do transfer or something?
We'd probably move that over from the, the normal line.
Um, yeah, there's not any, uh, encumbrances on this outside of what this would be, so this is, that is the account balance.
You need to just create some income, please, you need to create some income.
Looks to me like you ought to make less trips to the golf simulator.
So Mayor, if this account only has, let's say, two thousand dollars in it and we've got a bill for three thou- thirty-one hundred in it, that's gonna zero that out, obviously for the rest of the fiscal year, so.
In the miscellaneous, yes, so, but we can pull some from the other line item in that.
Well.
Huh?
I said, well, the other line item in that is just his salary, so.
So there's probably a reason why you was wanting to do it this way.
Right, but remember that that, we don't pay him, sixty thousand, we pay him.
I was gonna say, I'm not salaried, I knew your budget is sixty like I was.
Right. Right.
It's hourly.
I mean, that's perfectly fine, if you guys would like to change the account number to be taken out of his not salary line item, then that's fine, that'd be a lot easier than a journal transfer.
Which was under budget last year.
I'm glad you used the microphone.
Okay, so.
But wait till this year's over.
Yeah. So can we, uh, can we get a change in that motion to fifty-one, to do the, the other account, fifty-one?
I'll make, amend mine, I don't know what the account number is, somebody's gonna tell me what it is, or just.
Oh-two, two-eleven, fifty, eleven.
Yeah. I'll amend mine for that.
Get a second?
I will second the amendment to that.
Have you given us any Christmas discounts?
You name them?
Uh, I think, you guys, if anyone had any idea how many phone calls I get versus making the billing, I'm surprised how many Christmas discounts we get.
I was just gonna say, the phone calls.
Call for the vote. Call for the vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Mayor, I do have a question, though, for Chase on this, do we foresee any more, or is this close out that case?
This is the beginning of the case.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, item six, Mayor's report, um, sealed bid opening for the installation of Skate Park Phase Two. Courtney, do you have that?
In the envelope.
One day, at one forty-nine P M. today.
Who is the bid from on the envelope, sir?
Well, on the outside of the envelope, it does not tell me.
Very well.
You wanna verify that's still sealed? And it's taped like, like it's got a nuclear bomb in it.
Karnak the magician is doing his thing.
You gotta hold it against your head. Johnny Carson, you didn't watch Carson?
So, American Ramp Company is the one that put their bid in here. That's the company we've been using. Make sure that that's the right number there. We have the notarized sworn statement of non collusion from them. That is notarized on the fourth of November. And their number is fifty thousand, six oh-three, twenty-five.
Is that the same as what it was originally?
Can I, can we go to B?
He just opened it, so.
Before we talk about it.
Do you want, Courtney?
I said he just opened it, so he might not know.
Yeah, there was no action on that one, so no discussion either. So we'll go to item B. Item B is discussion and possible action to award the bid for the installation of Skate Park Phase Two.
So moved.
A motion from Gantier and a, who is it? And then a second from Brishir.
How much was the bid?
Fifty thousand, sorry, I put it away.
Six oh-three, twenty-five.
And that is the same as the one that was on the October fifteenth meeting?
Fifty thousand, six oh-three, twenty-five. And just for reference, the date on that quote is eleven-four, twenty-four. That is a fresh, fresh quote.
How was this advertised for bidding?
City website, the local paper. Those are the methods that we use.
Courtney, did your office have any calls regarding this?
We did, we received one call, um, it was sometime early last week, I don't remember the company name, but I instructed them to, I directed them to the website so that they could see all of the bidding specifications, and I didn't receive anything from them.
And I, I did try to contact, there's, there's just not many after above Skate Park company, you can Google Skate Park.
Hey Frank, microphone's up here.
Yeah, Nina can't hear you.
It's not what you think, you can Google Skate Parks, but they're not all above ground, and they're not all the same. But anyways, I, I tried to contact a couple of them. The biggest issue was ninety percent of it, um, is going to install two Phase One, and if you, it's in the thing, if it, if they're, uh, if they have to change anything, then it voids. So a lot of them wouldn't, wouldn't do it.
Further discussion, call for the vote.
Can we have an amended motion to award the bid to American Ramp Company, no other bids received, in the amount of fifty thousand, six oh-three, twenty-five?
You wanna amend your motion to that, Chris?
Yes.
We probably need to outline what account comes up, too.
Four-four, four-four-five, fifty-four, fifteen.
Is that what it was from the last agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Did everybody catch that? Forty-four, four-four-five, five-four-one-five.
That's part capital outlay.
Correct.
Yep.
Gantier, are you good with that?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yep.
Go ahead and call for the vote when you're ready.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Uh, item C, discussion of possible action regarding the review of the twenty-twenty-four First Street Rehabilitation Project.
Motion.
A motion from Brishers.
Second.
Second from Bradshaw. So we got this in, I believe it was the day that, it was right as we, uh, Terry didn't, I called you right as we canceled the last street meeting, I believe is when I called you on that.
Yes.
It was like, right at the same time we got it in, is when that canceled. Um, and I left that up to him, what he wanted to do, and he opted to just send it straight on to the council, so. This is going to be, if you look on page.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-two, yeah, I'm going to the map, page twenty-two of the packet, you'll see that it highlights, uh, Northeast First Street or Old Highway Twenty. From approximately the top or the top east side of Cemetery Hill through Keel Road, which is, um, I believe it's just right about a mile is where we're looking at. So, uh, that is, uh, basically what we're looking to do there. We originally had talked about with, uh, with Dale, when we looked at that originally, we were gonna do a, a mill it, we were gonna mill that down, and then put a two-inch overlay on it. We decided that it did not need the full two-inch mill, um, that it, he felt that it was, it was, for the most part, in good enough condition on the base. But if we just hit some of the high spots that are down closer on the east side of that project area, uh, where there was, I don't know if it was previous, uh, asphalting or, whatever was done there, created the road to have some, some raised areas. Those and a few other select areas would be milled down, but we would put a cloth down on that, and then the two-inch overlay, they felt would be sufficient. Um, to kinda help keep that cost within Buddy's budget. He did go with a ten percent contingency, engineering fees are in there. Buddy is confident that if that doesn't come in under that seven fifty-one number, that he's got enough in his drainage funds, that, that we could cover the big, the, the residual amount of that, and that wouldn't be any, any big issue. But I think we can all agree that that's a stretch of road that's needed quite a bit of attention for a long time. And that would include striping and everything else on there, at the conclusion.
How much money did we set aside at the beginning of the year for this project?
Um, for this particular project, I don't know that we necessarily said this is what we're setting aside, but I'd have to look here and see what he put in that.
I know there was a sizable amount put in one account for a project, I may not have said directly, but I'm just curious what that account had in it, I guess.
Capital Outlay has a hundred thousand budgeted.
In the street asphalt overlay, we put seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
Um, and then in that, uh, drainage projects, he has eight hundred and eight thousand. So.
Well, are we gonna have other drainage projects that that's gonna be a detriment to?
Probably your big truck. He said that he could. Said it's his big truck that's tearing it up all the time.
Well, we get a lot of complaints from the guys that ride motorcycles up and down that road, that, that it's pretty bad, so. Sorry, Terry, what was your question?
It does need to be overlaid, and I'm a hundred thousand percent to do it, I'm just wanting to know if this, if you're gonna take money from drainage to put into this, is that gonna take away from any drainage projects that we have that need to?
He didn't, Buddy did not feel that it would take a detrimental amount away from any of the drainage projects. Like we said, this is the engineer's estimate, if we come in, um, if we come in and it's even the slightest bit under, we still got the ten percent contingency, um, and we're right at seven fifty-one. So if, if we did anything, it would be, my guess is, it would be maybe fifty thousand, we'd have to take out of that eight hundred. And Buddy didn't feel, when we talked about that, uh, 'cause that was one of my first questions, we don't wanna take away from what we have planned on, on Elliott or wherever, and he didn't feel that that was.
Do, do we think the base is sufficient in some of those areas where there's some huge potholes and washout areas that it's not, that an overlay's gonna be sufficient for that?
Yeah, Dale looked at them all, we, we drove that, uh, that stretch pretty thoroughly, he, he was confident that the base was good, but it was just deep potholes.
Okay.
And so the, that, those areas will just have a, you know, a deeper asphalt, but that cloth, that binding cloth, um, the fabric is supposed to help with the adhesion there.
Mayor, how's the engineering fees arrive at, do you know?
They're per job, I don't know how he, I don't know what algorithm he uses to calculate that up, but I'm sure we can get an itemization from that.
I was just kinda curious, what, he's charging about sixty thousand in engineering?
That's pretty par for the course.
That's what I didn't know, I didn't know what percentage he normally get.
Remember, as we look at these, um, typically in the past, in the various departments that we've had projects, um, including, uh, general outside services in the general fund, the oh-two, two-o-one account. Those engineering fees have come out of those accounts, we've also had to budget for engineering. When we switched from Steve Powell to Dale Burke, although it's still Infrastructure Solutions, we went to an agreement that it would be by the job, not by the hour. And so I think in the long run, um, we're seeing, I think we're saving quite a bit by doing that. If you want, we can get an itemization from Dale.
Well, I'm just curious to what, if he had a percentage rate he figured on a job, so I guess.
Yeah, that, that's a him question, and I asked if he could be here tonight, and he had another engagement with his family that he could not. But instead, if we needed to call him, we could call him.
I'm just curious.
Mister Mayor, um, I, from reading old stuff, and, 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 uh, ought to may be able to, in general, come up with this, there's a, there's a percentage that they get of the overall contract on, on some of these items. Do you think that might apply to this well, just kinda like a?
I'm sure, but I'll repeat, that's a, that's a Dale question. Again, you want that itemization, I'll call him, we'll get it.
Uh, one concern is, granted, I live down that road, so I can attest to its necessity, half the people driving out east get into the westbound lane just to avoid some of the, some of the, uh, roughness out there. But if it, if we get seventy-five percent of the way through the project, and we're about to bust budget, um, I wonder, the, most of the issues on that road are closer to Keel Road. The further, closer to Keel you get, the worse it gets. The portion between the Cemetery and Gaither Road are not as, not as problematic. So would, wonder if there would be a better way if we started this for them to move, move east to west, to get the problematic areas done first, and then.
Sure, um, and I appreciate your question. So here's how this works, when we go out for bidding, we bid the job, uh, the contractors will come back and say, here's what I'm gonna charge you for that, um, Dale manages that process. So all of that is part of the engineering fee, the, the design, the layout, the, the research and whatever. We're not gonna bid out the job and then them come back halfway through and say, huh, we bid it out for seven hundred, you know, whatever, whatever, let's say, five hundred thousand, and now you're out of money. If we accept the bid for five hundred thousand, then that's what we're, that's what we're being charged for that job. Now, if they come in and we start saying, yeah, but we wanna go, we wanna go a hundred feet up Gaither to the north, we wanna go here, we wanna start adding this, we'd like our ditches cleaned out, that's on us, and that's all additional fees. Um, you know, and I think we ran into a little bit of that last year with the alleyways, where we, we had the initial project, and one thing inadvertently led to another, led to another, and before you know it, um, we pretty much tapped out the street, the street overlay fund. Um, and we got funds from the E D T A, they were, they were gracious enough to, to support us there, um, et cetera. I think the process is, um, we're gonna bid out this job, this, this stretch from Keel Road to Cemetery Hill. You know, there was concern that on the west side of Cemetery Hill, there was a patch that Mub had done, you know, that's one of those things, we say, hey, about ten feet away from where you end is another patch, do you think you could stretch it out? And they may give us a price for that, they may say, yeah, that's another five thousand dollars. At that point, we make that call, we make that call if we wanna do that, and they don't get to just spend our money for us. But we will have to approve the bid that is accepted, and then part of that also, you'll see on there, um, that we added a resident project representative to that. That was one of the things that we had requested, Buddy had requested, is to have somebody on site representing our side of that as we go through. Um, which in the past, historically, the city did not do on other projects, uh, the way that they should have done, and that cost us quite a bit of money, a couple million. Um, but the idea is, those are things that we've requested as a city to have, that those are things they're providing. But whatever that final bid is, no matter who gets that, we do have a few companies that we do not choose to do business with, that in the past have come in, hundred thousand dollars or more lower. If you remember on last year's project, uh, one of those companies came in several hundred thousand dollars under everybody else, um, and in the best interest of the city, we did not, we did not go that route. Uh, because we knew that in the past, we'd had run-ins with them, and so, you know, we wanna avoid those kinda situations as we look at this, you get what you pay for. Is, is a true statement when it comes to laying down roads. So, um, I think the next step would be to, uh, let Dale go out for the bids, post the bids, get them out, um, and then come back and see what, what we get. Again, those may come down significantly less, if it comes in and the bids are significantly higher, then we reassess what we're gonna do. Uh, we reassess how far we're gonna go, we reassess what we do, but, um, yeah, if we wanna start at Keel Road and work our way to the west, then we'll tell them, start at Keel and work your way to the west, uh, that's what they'll do, so. Does that help out a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
Further discussion on this? Then call for the vote.
I am gonna need an amended motion telling me what we're doing, which would be approving, apparently approving, the twenty-twenty-four First Street Rehabilitation Project.
That is correct.
I need someone to say that.
Who made the motion?
Because it's not there.
It need to come out of a certain account?
It doesn't have to, I mean, it definitely helps.
Right, right now, it's intended to come out of that street asphalt overlay account.
Am I the one that made the motion?
Uh, Brishers and Bradshaw.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't think I did.
And I, I guess technically, we haven't even received bid yet, so this is just to.
Approving.
Approve that portion of it?
Yeah, going out for bid and all that.
Overall, discuss the project approval, moving forward to the next step to give Dale the, the okay to move on. So, we had those, those amended, did you get those?
Yes.
Call for.
Are you guys both good with that?
Yes.
Okay, can you, can you say what the motion is again?
Approve the twenty-twenty-four Street Rehab Project.
Does this include going out for bids on it?
You are giving them authorization to go out for bid.
You're giving Dale authorization to move, move on, just like he would with any of the other projects we've used in Florida.
Okay.
That's a new.
Do we need to designate when the bids will be?
They handle all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, Dale will take care, and I'll keep the street committee informed as I talk to Dale.
Do we want, as a council, do we want them to be, the bids to be opened in council meeting?
So.
Like we did tonight for the skate park, sealed bid?
So, if I can.
Sure.
Though you're asking the council, when Dale does these, when Infrastructure Solutions does these, he actually has a meeting specifically with the engineers, or with the contractors.
I've been to one of those before, yes.
And that's because he's also checking the bonding, he's checking a whole bunch of things that are required. And that's because he's also checking the bonding, he's checking a whole bunch of things that are required. He checks for those, those affidavits that Mr. Gantier, you know, always lets us know about. That's kind of the process that, that is in place for that. It's up to you.
They do too.
Honestly, I would like to see it remain the way we've been doing that.
Yeah, they have their own public hearing that's posted with the rest of the advertisement for the bids is what they've done in the past.
A public hearing?
Yeah, it has to be.
So a public hearing has to be, like, put out in newspaper that there will be a public hearing?
They do that. They do all of that for us. I've got previous bills from Terry. And it's always open here at City Hall in, right in here. The doors are open in public.
Usually on like a two o'clock on a Tuesday afternoon or something.
Yeah.
Typically, he tries to get that done in enough time to get it back to the council before the next appropriate meeting.
For, for clarification on this, I want to ask Mr. Alward a question. When you go to the county commissioner meetings, do they open their bids for road projects in the council, in the commissioners' meeting as a sealed bid, not have a little private meeting at another time with the engineers and the contractors? That's what I thought.
To, to Mr. Lamar's point, I, I do think that we would be better served having a sealed bid. I'm not saying that it would or wouldn't happen, but we're approving an amount without approving an amount right now. And if bids come in under or over that or whatever, the only person that has any say in it, if it comes in unsealed is the engineer. And I'm not saying that would happen, but the, the potential for a bid to be increased or whatever else without being sealed, I think would exist.
The bids are sealed and they're turned in to me. I hold them until the public meeting here that they advertise at two o'clock or whatever, and then I give them to open in here.
So they are sealed?
Yes.
Yes, they're sealed, just, just like the state requires. They follow all the state laws.
And basically what we're approving tonight is not spending the 751. We're approving Infrastructure Solutions to go for, go on to the next step with the process, continue on.
Which is essentially to go get those bids.
To go get the bids and, and he will follow that process. We are not approving 751,000 tonight.
No, I think, I was just, Councilman Lamar's point was, I think that he was just wanting to ensure that they were sealed and I would agree with that, that they are.
Yes.
Hundred percent.
Okay, I, I misunderstood. I thought everybody just turned in a bid at the public hearing and then there we are.
No, and again, just to reiterate, on top of opening those, Dale is looking to make sure the affidavits are in there. He's making sure that the bonding, the bonding amounts match the required bonding amounts. All of that is done in the meeting and then all of those bids are read publicly with all of the, um, contractors present in the room and so.
Which is part of his engineering fee.
And then, yes, and he provides to the city in return a, uh, it's, it's his bonding checklist is what he sends back to the street committee.
I, I will say that I was present at one of the bid openings last year. I can't remember if it was for the alleys or which one or overlays. I think it was the overlays of streets. And, and yes, the, the bids were here, they were opened up. Actually, no, they were not sealed and opened up because he already had a spreadsheet to hand out to us that had the amounts on there that everybody had bid. That is exactly what happened. And then, uh, the, the, uh, construction companies were present for it and we discussed it. But he already had a spreadsheet built that had those prices on it, so they were not sealed at, at the meeting that I was, that I attended at one time. My point is, we have talked about our bidding procedures being reformed and I still say we need to do that, and I know we're going to talk about it later on. We did a bid for the skate park tonight that was sealed and I am very well good with that. The county commissioners on road projects open up their sealed bids on all of their construction projects and road projects in the, in the open, uh, meeting at that time. And I just think that part of our reform process is that that's what we need to do here too. So.
As long as it's open in public, in a public meeting, there's no reason why you guys can't amend your motion to include that in this.
Well, I don't recall that the meeting that I was at was a public meeting that they had at that time.
They're posted in the newspaper and in all of the bid, um, specifications.
At the meeting that I attended, I was, uh, just happened to be, we're going to have it, we're going to open up the, the bids at a certain time if you want to be here, and I was here. And sat right here with Dale and the only people that were present was the engineer and the construction company that put the bids in that were already put on a spreadsheet to begin with and not sealed.
Um, the last.
So.
The last meeting I was part of, those, that sheet that he had.
Mm-hmm.
It had the various contractors on the side, but he did go in and rewrite, he wrote in their amounts. And then, because it's a checklist, he writes in there the amount of their bid and then he writes in whether or not they've got their bonding and whether or not those affidavits are all in place. Then he checks and they're done. And then he reads those out loud and then submits that to the city from there. And that's been his process. Those meetings are posted, um, they're, they're noted, they're, they're, there's nothing.
Do we have minutes to that meeting?
They're not, they're posted in the newspaper as a public meeting. They're not public meetings of the city council.
If I may.
Required to take minutes for that.
I would like to ask Ms. Llewellyn to come up and give her two cents as a purchasing agent, who I have relied heavily on for our purchasing policies, but I know that she spent her entire career with it. I, I think on a 700 and three quarter million dollar project, I have all the time in the world to listen to make sure that we're doing it right. And I realize we're not approving the project.
Right.
By any means.
Just moving forward.
Thank you, Tyler. Um, I was in public procurement for 45 years uh, in California and Arizona. Don't hold that against me. Um, but I still love my hometown and, uh, anything I can do to help on this, I'm happy to help. What I am used to, uh, and I think the Infrastructure Solutions, um, process is, is interesting to me. It's different than what I'm used to. For a formal sealed bid process, what you're going to do is you can have, you don't need to have that in a city council meeting. You can certainly, and it's a very public way to do it. So that's, that's a good thing. Uh, usually a bid opening, a formal sealed bid opening is done, uh, at the entity. Uh, it can be in the purchasing office, it can be in City Hall or wherever a public location is. Uh, those bids are brought in, uh, by the vendors very carefully, very precisely before the due, due time. Two o'clock means two o'clock. 202 is too late. We're sorry you didn't get there on time, but you know, next time we hope you can. Um, and then basically in a bid opening, all I ever did was you go through the bids and you read the dollar amount. And then, and that's all. And then, uh, the contractors that are in the room, uh, can write down those numbers. And the purchasing agent takes those, takes the packets back, and that's when they go through and do their due diligence. You're going to be looking for those non-inclusion affidavits and the 5% security bond and those kinds of things that are required for a sealed bid process. Then maybe you're asking for references. That's when the purchasing agent takes a, makes all those phone calls. All of that information then would, in a city, uh, would be taken to, uh, city council. Basically, the purchasing agent is going to be recommending, uh, uh, who, award to the low responsive and responsible bidder and those items have, those things have meaning. Um, and saying, this is the, the award we recommend, this is the vendor we recommend. We looked at the licensing, we did all our due diligence and everything is proper. If there is a low bidder that needs to be rejected because they didn't turn in their bid properly, uh, they messed up a bid, they didn't do a bid bond and they were supposed to, or something like that. Uh, a letter goes out to that particular vendor, only if they're low. And a letter goes out to them and that says, um, we're rejecting your bid, this is why. You have five calendar days or working days or, or whatever you think is appropriate and gives you time, um, in order to respond. If you think we're wrong, you can come and talk to us about that. Um, so I, I guess what I kind of see for, uh, this town is, uh, an entity and it doesn't matter who it is, and I know that's an issue here because we have a very small staff, very good one, but a very small one, um, is that process going that way and then it coming to the city. I understand that Infrastructure Solutions handles this in a different way. And I am not used to that. Um, things in, where I grew up, when I, in my purchasing part of my life, this is very different for me to see a, an outside entities, entity handling everything. Um, I'm not saying it's wrong, but I guess my concern is, how are they doing it? What are they doing? How do we know what the bid process is? I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything wrong. I just, but I'm really big on, do we know exactly what's happening? Uh, do we have eyes on it? Do we have all of the right, uh, pieces of paper? There's really got to be more transparency in, in my opinion. You need a lot more transparency in how you're doing things now. So Infrastructure Solutions is great if they're handling all that, but that's something where I think we need to improve our knowledge here as far as how those things really done. Does that help at all and what questions?
I think so, and I think that's more along the lines of what I was talking about with Councilman Lamar earlier of understanding, in this instance, ISG is being the purchasing agent.
Right.
Essentially, they're, they're being the gatekeeper.
Right.
And when we were talking about sealed bids, I know that was one thing, but the sentiment of my statements were, are we comfortable with them being the gatekeeper? Or is that creating any issues for us on the bidding process?
Again, my opinion is, um, I would, uh, have it done more within, uh, the city's purview. Again, that's not because they're not doing the right thing or doing it wrong or anything like that. But we have more of a, an absolute control, uh, and as far as anything that's happening. Just be caught in two, and you know this anyway, but just because you open a bid at a city council meeting doesn't mean that bid is ready to, to award. Um, especially if you have more than one bid, uh, you don't know what's in there. You don't know what they're bidding on. You don't have any idea. That needs somebody to be, purchasing agent or designee. That needs somebody to go through and really check everything. So, uh, again, something I would be concerned about or be taking a look at is, uh, okay, $280,000 on a piece of paper and sure, let's award it. There's, you need to know an awful lot more before you're awarding that kind of money. Um, you need the transparency. You need, um, you need to know that you've done everything you can do to be absolutely responsible for the process that's been in public funds. So, and I'm really, uh, picking on the neck on that, so. But people really do like working for me, I think. I don't think it was. They kind of, yeah, I think they like.
Phyllis, I'd like to let you know that.
Yes, sir.
Um, your wealth of knowledge is invaluable, so we appreciate.
I will do anything I can do to help this town. I love this place. I don't know why. So anyway, yes.
That's, that's what you shared with me before you moved back and I think you've come true to that. Thank you very much.
I, I'm curious, if we did take on the task of handling this, would we save anything on engineering fees? And obviously, if we did, if we were the gatekeeper, we're obviously going to have to run these bids back through ISG to make sure that they're correct. And so maybe it's a wash, maybe it is okay just to let them handle it all. But I think the conversation's worth having on whether or not we want to let that occur or not. And I don't know if that's proper for this time or if it's proper for when we want to. I mean, I, I don't know if we're moving forward to accept bids at this stage or what we're doing here.
If I could say something, go ahead.
You're proving them to move forward with the project, so it's all of that.
Okay.
Um, I will say that they absolutely do have transparency. Everything that she just described, they do. We receive a copy of everything that they're posting. The entire bid packet is here and people are able to come here and view it to see what they want to bid on during the entire bid process.
So I think what's different.
We've received all the documents afterwards.
What's different now, and it looks different than the way it was in the past, is we, before Dale, who is the principal of, um, ISG, um, before Dale came on, we had Steve Powell, who was here. And Steve Powell was every day here. Uh, Steve Powell was by title the city engineer. Um, when Steve resigned, um, we handed that title off to Dale. So even though he is the president of that company, he is the acting city engineer. And so that's why we've kept that process with him because that's, that's the process.
He's very accountable, obviously, to the city.
Yes, and, and again, super transparent.
Yeah.
Um, if Dale feels like there's a hiccup in the plan, Dale will stop. So I, I feel confident, um, that, that, that proving to move forward with this, if Dale sees something that's going to, going to throw the budget out or isn't going to be processed right, Dale will come to us even and say, hey, Tom's asphalt out of Biscogee is not who we want to use because this, this and this, please consider that when I hand this to the council for approval.
I guess one of the things that, that I kind of see as you, because you are going to need to make a transition into doing more on the purchasing end and the bidding end than you've done before. Um, and there's quite a lot to it. I don't want to scare anybody, but, uh, there is quite a bit to it and I'll be glad to do anything I can to, to help make that easier. Um, I think, to me, I think the city needs to kind of master that, uh, piece uh, outside of Infrastructure Solutions, kind of get a, a good feel for how it's really done. Get to the point where it's like, where it's more natural, I think. Um, and you do have some, uh, certainly have some staffing challenges, uh, and that's a nice way of putting it.
Yeah.
I really worked at work. I didn't say things all out nicely, but, um, I think it's, to me, you need to just get a good handle on doing kind of your regular bids. Infrastructure solutions, I think maybe, once you get used to doing bids a certain way, and there is more to it, and I have a lot of suggestions, um, once you get used to kind of doing that, then you look at, maybe you look at infrastructure and say, what are the pieces that maybe now we feel comfortable pulling in? Uh, and maybe that would reduce somewhat the amount of money that we're paying to them. Now, I know most of what we pay them would be the engineering and an awful lot, uh, outside of just the purchasing piece. Um, but, uh, maybe some of that money could be saved and that would help staffing, general fund, whatever you need to do. So to me, let's get kind of better at it and more used to it. Um, as it happened today and tomorrow is the Oklahoma Association of Public Procurement and there is such a thing, um, and they have their, uh, conferences, uh, this year in Tulsa and it was today and I'll go back tomorrow. So I'm trying to make some connections, uh, as far as resources. Uh, what are some of the different things that the town can do to make, kind of, kind of get through this a little bit? But anyway, so, does that help?
Yes, thank you, sir.
I will do whatever I can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, that was very informative and helpful. I, I do want to, uh, can, uh, agree with what the mayor said. It's night and day how the process has been going with, with our, um, engineering services compared to what they were, but I do agree with Councilman Lamar that, you know, we, we need to make sure. So, um, I have no complaints against what's been going on. However, I do believe we have to be accountable and responsible.
Call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Thank you. Good discussion. Thank you, Phyllis, for your input. Madam, thank you for your head nods and silent input. Appreciate that. All right, item seven, city attorney's report. I think on this we can ask the motion to waive the reading, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so second reading and possible approval of an ordinance changing and amending zoning classification from AG Agricultural to CAR Commercial Automotive Recreation to the property described as follows.
Motion to include waiving the reading.
To approve and waive the reading?
Yes.
Do I have a second to approve and waive the reading?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, call for the look.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Brishers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item B, second reading and possible approval of an ordinance. Item B, second reading and possible approval of an ordinance pertaining to changing and amending zoning classification from AEG agricultural to RM residential multifamily of the property described as followed.
Motion and including waiving of the reading.
Second.
Motion to approve and waive reading, correct?
Yes. Motion from Gantier, second from Lamar. Call for a vote.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Is everybody good? Everybody needs a short break? Short break would probably be good. Somebody else?
Well, for sure.
Man, Bruce is like, short break. We will reconvene promptly at 15 after.
Switch it to something. Well, one, you can just remove this entire thing. I don't think that's a good idea because I think you want to leave these duties in here in case you ever want to change them later. An easy way to fix the show is to switch to a may. If that happens, mayor has the option to appoint counsel, then still does it. But I think this is for the purpose of basically having a city planner or something along those lines is what it would be comparable to. Because whoever is appointed, it's appointed for an indefinite term, which applies that. I also think another reason you guys don't have one is I can't think of anybody within prior that meets the qualifications.
Do you believe the word "may" is better than "should" or either one or?
I don't think you will see "should" in very many ordinances because it can be construed in different ways. So that would be my, I'd say "may." I understand what you're saying with, it gives it a bit more emphasis as far as it's encouraging it. I think another option would be put "may," and then also put in here, if there is not one mayor assumes these duties, which is kind of what you guys are doing anyway. It's almost like the mayor is appointing himself.
The tricky part about that is specifically on the purchasing agent portion, we are not giving him those duties.
Then you need to amend some of it. And there is the option, you could just pull this entire thing out too. But I don't know that you want to do that without putting some of this somewhere else.
Do you think step one, change it to "may"?
I think if you're going to change it, you should change it in a way you guys want it to read forever. "May" is, "may" would fix the issue of not having one, I will say that.
Further discussion?
I'm probably going to go to step one, and then we can dive off into the rest of it later. We've got lots of ordinances we're going to have to fix, I think.
And these are all, so I, I think I told you, this just says discussion, all right? Yeah, so all of these are going to say discussion for tonight because you can't actually vote on a change in ordinance without the change of the ordinance being drafted. So this is more just, hey, talk about this. If it seems like an idea, we can start drafting those ordinances to actually bring them. But I didn't want to draft a bunch of stuff and rack up bills if everybody says, no, we don't want that anyway.
So we have no vote on any of these, just motions discussed going forward?
Correct.
All right, further discussion? Item B, discussion to consider amending Title II, Chapter I, Finance and Budget Administration of the Prior Creek Ordinances.
Motion.
Motion from Brown?
Second.
Second from Gantier.
So the discussion in this was, I think that we probably have two options. And after speaking with some constituents and also some other council members, it sounds like the best option is probably to have Chase look through our purchasing manual or someone in his office or however he designates that, and then bring us the ordinances that need amended based upon what that purchasing manual and those guidelines say. I did discuss with him briefly the option of just saying that we had an ordinance that simply said, you're going to follow the purchasing manual. With the idea being that the purchasing manual would be all encompassing, and you wouldn't have to make a whole bunch of ordinances. But also, if you needed to change the purchasing manual, you could do that by the vote of a resolution. Whereas if we put ordinances in place, then we're going to have to go through the ordinance process, which is sometimes protracted. That can be good or bad, so. And the, the talk, the discussion I had with constituents and with councillors was probably it would be best to just put it all in ordinances, whatever we wanted to change and go on, but.
I will, because this is going to be coming up. I got to throw some kudos for Tyler because he saved you guys a ton of money. In the packet is a drafted, what am I going to start on?
Twenty-three pages.
Thirty-one. Thirty-one, City Prior big purchasing manual. This is a draft, this isn't being voted on or anything. Tyler actually put this thing together instead of having me do it, which saves you guys a fortune. But whether you do ordinances, whether you do a purchasing manual or the ordinance, just follow it. You guys need to all read this to figure out what is what in it. If you want to get, if you want changes, whatever it is, that's all for you guys to decide. But this is something in writing. I was like, Tyler put a ton of time in drafting. I've read through it, I haven't dissected it. But you guys are going to eventually, when you decide to put in your purchasing policy, however you do it, this is a really good, on paper, what you can see.
Since you brought that up, question to Courtney, is this his original or the updated?
I actually need to pause that for a second because I believe we, even if they're doing discussion on these agenda items, they still have to vote for the discussion, even if there's not action being taken on the item, correct?
Oh, vote to go into the discussion.
Correct. So we need to jump back to seven C and have a vote for that.
Sorry, my bad. Yep, just vote to discuss it, that's it. But there's no action on it.
Correct.
All right, so what do you need from us, just to go down?
Just to let me call for the vote on seven C. Smith?
Who?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Now, if we can vote on seven D. Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Frischiers?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Now you can finish discussions.
So I think after we went through the purchasing manual the other night, the.
We went line by line.
We did, and I would greatly appreciate not having to do that at this point tonight.
That's the same.
But I will say collaboratively, I think everybody in the room was on board with what it says. I think as we look at, as we look at that, it would be a really good guideline that we could hard copy, hand out in black and white, even to our, you know, rec board, whatever it is. We can hand it to them and say, here's what we want, the process that we're going to follow. It outlines, you know, travel, it outlines all those things that for so long have been, well, it's either the way we've always done it and we're unsure, or like we saw in a meeting a few weeks ago, well, how do we want to do it? Because for some, we did it this way, and for some, we did it that way. And so I, I 100%, as we came out of that ordinance meeting the other night with the amendments and the changes and the suggestions that we had, I think we were all 100% in agreeance that that was pretty much the way it needs to.
And to answer Gantier's question, the one that is included in your packet is what was approved at the committee meeting with all of the changes. I don't think he's listening though, so.
I absolutely refuse to take credit. This was all Ms. Llewellyn, who spoke just a little bit ago. She met with me not long after I was confirmed on the council, got with me about this, brought it to me, said, hey, this is an issue I've been looking at, and she's not wrong, it was an issue. I put some words in a document that I copied from some other cities to make it better. But she 100% looked over it, went through it, helped me go through it multiple times. She, she deserves the credit for it.
Let me say something. You don't give Mr. Brown credit for listening to me. Poor man. Now, he's right there after my husband as far as, but if you say anything. Please give him credit. At least I want to cobble together all of these different things and say, is this what we need? I want to make sure you understand, the policy is a great beginning. You cannot write a policy that covers everything you need to know about how to do procurement completely across the board. I was looking at, just for the. I was looking at, just for the, I don't know why, Scottsdale Arizona Procurement Cities Manual. It's great, it's fantastic, it's eighty-seven pages long. After twenty-two pages, you don't care anymore. So this is a good beginning, I still tweak it, I mean, oh, we should have been this, we should have like, no, but, you know, you're, this is a very good start, it's going to be a process to get through this. But please give Tyler credit for doing so much.
Well, we appreciate the collaborative effort is really where we're at with that, so thank you both.
And I do want to say something about that meeting. There was a lot of, which department heads all need to look at this because this would be something that you need to look at. And Courtney had a kind of a dual role in the discussion of this because she is a department head, yes, but she's also the one that's going to implement large portions of, or oversee parts of it as it's going through her. And so a lot of the practicality, I guess would be a good word, I think was addressed. And I think in a pretty positive way. So I think it's something that I believe is a very good attempt of getting us at least on the track to be where we need to be.
It was submitted out or sent out to the department heads for review as well. Carrie uses technology, so she was able to give me a lot of comments on the document. And I received some feedback from other department heads.
Did they get the original or the things that needed tweaking?
They got the original because I hadn't gotten the chance to make the tweaking before they got it, yeah.
So just so that we're clear from our action from here, we, we as a council need to review this and, I mean, we don't meet with ONI until December. I don't know that that's the best time, but at some point we need to get Chase what we want to correct in our ordinances or amend. So during our discussion here, I think we should probably outline what the duty there is amongst us, I mean.
Here's what I would recommend, I don't know if two weeks is enough for you guys. Everybody review this, put it back on the agenda, I mean, exactly as it's worded again.
With action or no action?
I'd say no action, just to bring it up and discuss after everybody's had a chance to read it. And then you can first discuss, do you want it as ordinances or do you want it as the policy? I think that's your first decision to make. And then everybody can go through and understand what it is, if they like it, if they want addition, changes and discuss all of that. And then we can draft it up. Either edit this and it's the policy manual and edit the ordinance, which that would be timeline is the easiest. But if you want to make it ordinances, go through and I can reorganize the ordinances to amend those and then we'll break it back at that point to actually vote on.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend for an organization because this is a lot of information that everybody needs time to look at before you guys vote on it.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Do I have to read it again?
I've got a, I've got a question. We're talking about item D, correct? That's what our discussion was on. We haven't got to the item E yet, which is about this particular document that you've already been talking about.
I thought we voted on it.
So.
Item D is.
You got.
Sorry, I got out of.
Yeah. You've got to follow the script.
I know, I know. Do you have a main?
I know you want the accolades for all.
And I think item A will fall under item B, at least in part of the ordinances, if that's the way she has to say.
Well, so then do I need to wait till item E to ask my question or now?
I think you go ahead and open up item E.
Would you like to move forward to item E?
Are we all ready to move on to item E?
Yes. Which is the same thing we've been talking about, but.
Discussion to consider recommending adoption of twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four Prior Creek Purchasing Manual to the Prior Creek City Council.
So move.
A motion from Gauthier.
Second.
Second from Troya.
Okay, I have said repeatedly before that this needs to be done. But I personally feel that it should be in the form of a formal ordinance versus the manual for having some teeth for enforcement into the future instead of just a manual.
Yeah, and the plan, I don't want to say plan, but the idea that had been discussed is we change the ordinance to shall follow the purchasing manual. So it is still an ordinance to follow.
Right, but the manual can be changed any time without necessarily being an official ordinance.
It's supposed to be approved by council before anything can be changed.
Right, on the, on the policy.
It's supposed to be approved, but it can be approved easier than a ordinance, that's right.
The, the original thought, which, yeah, right, exactly. The original thought was, hey, if we get in a money crunch and we need to drop spending limits, we can do that in one vote, we're done, we can drop them. But at the same time, you could also come in and raise spending limits in one vote and go on, so. Like, it's a pro con and I think probably writing the ordinances are the better way to go. It's going to be the more cumbersome way though.
And, and I'm not an attorney, obviously, but I think that this, this, this manual is talking about your, your travel expenses and all this too. Not, that's separate from purchasing and bidding.
Yeah, if we break it into ordinances, this is going to be several different areas of your ordinances. It's not going to be in one copy and paste down there. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
All right, call for the vote.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Okay, item G, discussion to consider.
No, F.
F? Son of a gun, marked it off before I got there, I'm sorry. Discussion to consider creating, creation of a purchasing agent for the city of Prior Creek and determining compensation for such position.
So move, second.
Motion from Gauthier, second from Shropshire.
I think I said in the meeting that I believe a good purchasing agent that's helping us to follow the details could probably pay for themselves by making sure that we don't do stupid things. So the idea is good. I don't know where the money would come from at this point, but I do think the concept is a good one.
I, I think we find the money when we figure out what that money is. I will say that this will also require probably an ordinance change, just like we have a safety director, just to establish it.
Because except your purchasing agent is your city administrator right now.
Yep.
You guys had requested at the ordinance and insurance meeting for Zach and I to get together and discuss an amount.
Yep.
And that amount we agreed upon was two thousand a year. And it was discussed with.
I'm not sure if that's, if we approve that now, but I would be more than comfortable with that.
I, I discussed it with Darla as well. She mentioned that she's perfectly fine with these job duties and that the compensation is fine.
Which some of them she's doing already.
The majority, yeah.
It's, it's formalizing it and, and directing all the department heads that this is who you go to for these things.
Well, and giving through the autonomy to tell a department head, this isn't.
Right, I have to have this or I need this.
Not that they don't already listen to Darla when she tells them to do something, but it puts them in favor, I guess.
Some of them.
Most of the time, the department.
Like the ones that aren't listening now. I do think Darla.
I'm sure Captain Trammell listens to everything Darla says.
Trammell definitely does, yeah.
I think Darla's been around long enough that she's got a good grasp of what's going on.
She does.
So I think she is a logical choice.
She's an asset to our, our office.
Are you, are you guys discussing appointing an individual, not a physician?
I think we're going to create the physician and then allow, like the safety director.
It would be most stipend type scenario. Further discussion?
Is this something that you're wanting to do in this budget year or for the next budget year? Since we do have a financial crisis and here you are wanting to create a new position within the city.
Yes. Yeah, it would be for, soon as the council would approve it, we would, we're not giving a full check. It'll work out to be about.
It's like seventy-ish dollars.
Seventy dollars or so per pay period more. So we're looking, that position that is already salaried already there would, would get.
Okay, it's just an extra like stipend, like you said, to not create a brand new position with the new benefits.
It would be a stipend scenario.
And this is something that our ordinances are going to have to be changed before it can go into place. So it's going to be a few months at least technically before it could go into effect. So there's the potential that it could be next fiscal year.
But is this going to add or take away from our savings that we've been trying to accomplish? Because this is just the first one. We've still got the rest of the year to go and I'm sure there'll be other things that come up that people's going to be wanting extra stuff for and extra people for.
Possibly.
So you think this is a financially or a physically responsible move at this point?
I think it is a responsible move to give that autonomy and that accountability to one person along with the adoption of something hard copy. You know, even in the park board, I believe was the other night, we had talked about some things and there were some questions about how the process was going to go. And we brought up that, you know, we're working on this, this is something we have and when it's finished, hopefully there's something tangible that we can say, hey, you're on the board, read this and you'll know the answer to your question. I think having that person dedicated gives us accountability, something that.
Well, there's no doubt about that, but.
And I think as we look at, we look at that stipend, it's, it's a very affordable amount for that responsibility, so.
I'm like Lamar, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying at all, but we're still looking at the money problem we've got to deal with. And it's not a great amount and she deserves it, I have no problem with that. I just don't know if we're heading in the right direction right now on her spending.
Well, I think we'll save money because if we'd had somebody doing this when we had some large projects that I'm not going to mention a while back, where we lost, my best guess, hundreds of thousands of dollars because we didn't have somebody following the process and we royally had a nightmare and a disaster. That, that amount to me is, is going to, I believe, save us some money, not just.
I, I think it's a good idea.
To potentially answer your question though, if this is something that is given to Darla, money is going to have to be transferred to my salaries line item to cover this cost because there's not two thousand dollars additional in there. You guys decide where that comes from, that's all up to you guys, that's not my choice. But yes, I would have to have additional funds if this is all put in place to support that.
Answer your questions?
Yes.
All right, further discussion? Can we call that one?
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Reshears?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
I want to clarify, is this yes or no vote to create this position?
We're not.
This is discussion, okay.
There's no action on any of these.
Okay, so yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
And now we'll do item G. Discussion to consider amending Title I, Chapter Six, Article C, City Attorney of the Prior Creek Ordinances to require notification of legal, legal action or claims being filed against the city of Prior Creek.
So move.
Second.
We got a motion from Gauthier, second from Smith.
Who would be notified?
I'll tell you guys, the city finds out when there's a legal action before I do, you get served, but.
I call Chase and let him know if we got stuff.
Yeah, whatever duties you want to put on me, I'm glad, I work for you, so.
You say the city, but we may not find that.
Correct, correct, yeah. Yeah, whatever you guys, I work for you, so.
Does this also include tort claims?
That was the discussion in the OME.
So this would be notifying council, letting us know what's going on.
It also notifies the public that there's something out there too, which I think just, I think they have a right to know.
Yeah, their money, they got a right.
I'm just mentioning it because it's not clarified. And I'm perfectly okay with everybody being notified.
I think legal action and claims pretty much covers everything that you're going to get.
I would think, I guess, demand letters.
Would there be, just hanging out loud, would there be scenarios where we might want to just let the council know before we? I'm just thinking about some of the things that we've dealt with in the last.
It is my position to let my clients know when they're being sued before the public knows, but. Whatever you guys want, I get it's public, I mean, it's public funds, so I'm not disagreeing with anything. I'd do whatever you want, but I am a believer in attorney-client privilege. Whatever you guys want to do with that privilege is on you guys. I, I don't.
You guys as an individual or a whole body?
Supposed to be the whole body because I represent the body, not individually, but I don't think there's a claim if somebody's talking.
Fine. When drafting this to go to the ONI, my intent was just for the notification that it exists in the ether somewhere, that it's out there. It doesn't have to be a discussion about the details of the case or anything else other than to say, this exists.
Yeah.
I think that would be fine, just with the clarification for that as we write it out.
And tort claims are actually filed up here and they're.
So a lot of lawsuits aren't filed here, but they serve here.
Right.
So I don't get served.
And tort claim, I mean.
Torty tells me we're sued.
Right, and that's not necessarily have, something that has to be done in executive session. It's just a fact that you got filed on, I mean, that's public record in the court house.
That's correct, that's correct.
What do other cities do? To your knowledge?
The other city I represent doesn't get sued as well. I don't know that I'd say there's a standard for it.
Do you see any harm in it?
It's all.
In the notification?
It's all public record.
Right.
I do want to clarify because it does say legal action or claims. And you mentioned that it would be claims or legal action that Chase would receive. So my question is, is it only things that Chase would be dealing with? Because Chase doesn't deal with tort claims, those are filed directly to OMAG. Chase doesn't deal with claims that are filed to OMAG via, for insurance like car accidents.
So no, it's not saying that it's things that he deals with, it's saying legal action filed against the city.
Right, but you said that in the meeting just a moment ago, so that's why I wanted clarification.
Here's, here's what I don't, again, I'd do whatever you guys want. What I don't want is, so process that we do right now, so everybody does. When a tort claim comes in, I might not even know about it because I've just given instruction, turn it over to OMAG. If they say there's a problem, let me know about it. Other than that, you don't want me dealing with it, I am two attorneys now. You're paying your insurance, so there's no reason for me to screw with it. What I don't want is for tort claims to come in here, I not know about them and now I'm in violation of the statute for not telling you about it, that's what I, I don't want. I have no problem with telling you everything I know, but.
I'm probably indifferent, all my personal opinion of it, other than just that we have the notification, whether it comes from your notification that goes to OMAG or the, or Chase. And I mean, I know we're not taking action tonight, but.
Right, I don't care either way either, it doesn't bother me not to tell you guys when we file a tort claim or anything. But I am not going to be telling, I'm not going to tell Chase every time we file a worker's comp claim. So this is not specific to what type of claims, so I need the specifics for that. But I'm not going to reach out to Chase and let him know that I have a worker's comp claim unless I think our city attorney needs to know about it for any other kind of legal reasons.
I mean, would a worker's comp really be what we're trying to address?
It says legal action or claims.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but my question to the council, do you think a worker comp is the type of claim that we are trying to address here or we're looking more like a legit suit? Not, you know, I'm hurt, I need surgery to fix my back, that was a legit act. Now, if they're wanting to sue us for five million dollars.
That's a different.
That's a different story.
That is something absolutely Chase would be involved in.
But, but as far as just, you know, that, I mean, I'm, I'm more, you know, yeah, tort, some kind of illegal action, you know, but.
Tort claims are turned into OMAG, currently the process is, they're turned into OMAG once the person fills out the documentation, I send it to OMAG, they review it and determine whether they want to take anything, action on that. I am almost positive that there has not been a single one that OMAG has wanted to pay out on. So.
As far as I know, that's right.
Yeah, I would have to go back and double check just to completely verify, but I don't remember any of them that have been filed as tort claims that have ever actually been paid out on. So if you would like, once they're filed and OMAG gets back to us, for me to let Chase know and let you guys know, that's fine. If you want to know the second that they're filed, that's fine, but that's what the process is.
I would assume that you let Mayor Doyle know when one of those comes in? I would assume that you let Mayor Doyle know when one of those comes in?
Uh, yeah, for the most part, we don't get them very often, I don't know that I've even dealt with five of them.
Would it be better served to put this under his section in the, in, in the ordinances for his requirement to notify the city?
Here's what.
Or how about this, under the city clerk's report, once a month, if there's tort claims filed?
Here is what I'll give you guys, again, do whatever. When it comes to tort claims, so for those who don't know what a tort claim is, before you sue any municipality or governmental entity in Oklahoma, you have to file a tort claim back. So, before you can file a lawsuit, you have to give them notice, it's sort of really just a letter that says, this is what happened, when it happened, this is what I want, okay? When those come in, it's amazing how many of those come in to municipalities and governmental agencies that never follow up with a lawsuit. And if they don't follow up with a lawsuit, their statute of limitations is shorter than that, and they are the most individual claims between citizens or businesses. If you make all of those public, well, fairly, but if you start broadcasting those outside people who are not necessarily a party to that tort claim are more likely to get involved, because now they're gonna know about them, such as A C L U, groups like that. That's my hesitancy with broadcasting them, not to say they're trying to sweep them under the rug, but broadcasting them for third parties to know that there's another issue is what my only warning would be, is it invites outside entities to now get involved in your business. Which happens. It is public records, if you guys want more transparency, whatever the city wants to do, that's my only hesitancy with encouraging. It is public record already, they can just mask whatever.
So that's just another way of saying that it's recommended that we kinda just hide it from the public, even though they should have a right to know it.
I'm not saying hide anything, I'm saying make them leave the steps to get it.
Well, yeah.
Anyone can request those records at any time.
They're public, they're one hundred percent public, I'm not, yeah. But, if somebody wants interest, have them come get interest as opposed to appetite somebody who might have an interest and wouldn't know about it.
Exactly, I'm not for sure what we're trying to accomplish here, it's not arguing.
From just the attorney standpoint, I will tell you, it is awful when you've got parties and you're in a negotiation, which often happens in tort claims, and they start chatter with other people, because your settlement goes away, cause they get them all worked up. And that, that's what my only concern with broadcasting tort claim notices are, not to hide them. They're public record, one hundred percent. But there's a difference between something being public record and broadcasting. But, again, that's your call, it's, it's one hundred percent public, however you guys want to go.
I'm just saying that, that from the, and, and again, I brought it up a little ago about the county commissioners, but in a county commissioners' meeting, every tort claim that's filed against the county, the county, the county clerk, when they receive that, they let the council, the commissioners know in public meeting that so-and-so filed a tort, and they just acknowledge that there was a tort claim filed.
County commissioners also paid out how many millions in a prison lawsuit, because that happened. A lawyer heard about it and got hooked up with the person that filed the tort claim.
In Mays County?
That was, I think it was last year, for the.
Well, yeah, but that was, yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, that was a bad deal.
It was a bad deal, but it was an example of what I'm saying, and I'm not saying she wasn't entitled to it, but it's an example of what I'm saying.
On this, my only concern is if, I don't care if it's Courtney, I don't care if it's the mayor, I don't care who it is, if somebody files some type of court claim against us, or a lawsuit, I'd like to know about it, not revise the paper. Sorry, Terry.
I mean, our active journalism is getting our job.
So he already broadcasts that stuff every week.
Well, I, I believe one hundred percent that, that the public is entitled to know things, but I also know that we represent the public in their best interest, and so we need to know if there's something coming at the city, especially since we're decision-makers. We need to be abreast of that pretty, pretty quickly, just in case there's something that we have to do in the city's best interest to protect the city. So, I, 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 I agree, I don't believe we should hide anything, but I do.
What's wrong with just the city clerk emailing us and let us know that the tort claim was filed and you know about it, as long as you, that's simple.
I'm fine with that.
So, Terry, are you, let me ask, hang on, Terry, are you asking that we just literally use the verbiage, hey, tort claim filed?
Well, no, not the, not the verbiage tort claim filed, you have a tort claim filed against you by so-and-so for so-and-so, for, for whatever act on such date. And then, of course, that information, if you wanna go look at the official claim or file, then you can come up or ask Courtney to send it to you.
I will say.
It's just notification that.
It just says notification on there, it didn't say it had to be in a public meeting or anything else, I do think that the public has a right to know, I'm curious of what you have to say, though.
It's on the agenda when the commissioners get a tort claim. The county clerk puts it on there, she's already talked to them about it, they know about it, but it comes to the meeting, and then all they do is say, we acknowledged receipt, and we're sending it on to O M A G, but the commissioners make that decision, not the county clerk. And then, if I wanna do something about it, I ask to see the tort claim. I could call Courtney every day, see if there's a tort claim filed.
You can, that's fine.
But that, that works.
So.
And a tort claim is being sued, it's a work.
So, basically, there's nothing wrong with us being notified in some way, shape, or form. Nothing would change it, you know, if, the public already has a right to know, which, that's, that's the whole.
There's nothing wrong with the, the county commissioners, there's nothing wrong with any way it's doing, the way that, all of that is one hundred percent.
Right, but if, but I mean, if we just kept it to a, a simple notification by email to the council, the public already has their right to know, cause they can, they can view public records, they just have to take that step to go get the public record, or they can wait for the paper to come out, spend a buck and read it. So, I mean, I really don't.
Serious tax dollars.
I'm trying to help.
Oh, joy.
And it helps in literacy, because people read the paper.
There, there you go, but, but, but to what Chase said, you get a lawyer who gets wind of something unnecessarily, they start licking their chops, and now we're out thirty thousand dollars, cause of whatever.
And I will tell you, most tort claim come in with a lawyer already, but you're more likely to get those third parties involved, such as A C L U or those groups.
Yeah, groups that.
Which they.
For more or less make.
I'm not criticizing, I'm not criticizing A C L U or those.
Right, but I was just. But you, but you might get individuals or groups at large abroad who might care more about money than they do about what the actual issue is, and so I think we're gonna invite some unnecessary issues if we just start broadcasting everything, when they already have a right to know as it is. Cause they can just take the step forward and go get that information themselves.
I, I think the perfect solution is just a notification to the council.
There you go.
Email or whatever that says blah, 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 and you're notified.
Well, if you guys are okay with that, Courtney and I'll figure out the best way to notify you, and we can go from there.
I think a simple email is perfectly fine. When it is filed.
And or, they could just attach the documents with it too, that give you details if you wanna know, but. I've requested documents from Courtney, and she's presented with no problem at all, but just the fact that there may be court claims filed that we may not have known about since.
And, and somebody's definitely frivolous, and we know that, but I, I would also ask if y'all think there may be something to it, make a little notation, I know you can't pick everything up, but if, if there's extenuating circumstances, just give us a little heads up if you think about it.
Alright, further discussion on that one? We will call for a vote.
Rashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Sharpshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question, to kinda speed this process up. So, why are we voting to discuss it and then we're voting again after the discussion? Since it was just discussion?
You're not voting to discuss it, you're making a motion and second to discuss it, and the Roberts Rules of Water requires a vote for all of that, but we do the motion and second to discuss, do the discussion, and then the vote after that.
Even though we're just talking about it, we're not taking action?
You're still discussing it, though, and you have to have a vote for, for the discussion.
Okay.
Sorry, Terry.
Hey.
I wish I didn't have to too, but it's the, it's the rules that you guys.
Alright, well, we're gonna go on.
Thank you.
Item H, discussion to consider amending Title I, Chapter Six, Article A, City Clerk of the Prior Creek Ordinance is to require all financial statements from the preceding month to be timely and accurately completed by the last day of the following month and delivered to the department heads and the city council members, in the event the financial statement is not complete, the clerk shall notify department heads and council members with the reason for the delay and complete the financial statement before the first council meeting following the deadline.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Gauthier, second from Rashir, discussion?
We had a discussion with Courtney about this, and Ms. Blue, everybody was agreeable that this was the acceptable terms with the email for delay being rare if needed at all, but it does allow her the opportunity to say, hey, if I'm smothered, I, I can sense something, and I will tell you when, that it'll, that it'll be there for the next council meeting. Also, what are, a lot of the lateness has come from software or network problems with the application that you're using. What are those issues, is that our side, is that their side, is it us understanding it, or?
Not understanding the software, um, the issues are either bugs in the software from updates, our equipment not working properly, not having employees so that I have time to focus on any of this, and also having a life outside of here.
And this is all Casell, basically, right?
The software we use is Casell, yes.
Just out of curiosity, I, I think I may have asked this months ago, I'm, but my memory's a little hazy on it. What's the difference between using Casell, I, are we bound to use certain things, or, because the, like, for example, my church, for many years, used QuickBooks, where you could literally just click a button, and you could have any report that you wanted to make up, and it was extremely user-friendly, once you got it, I mean, the updates were on point. What, what's, what would be the difference in using that versus something like Casell?
Uh, QuickBooks is really expensive, for one.
Right.
Um, so definitely not QuickBooks for us, but I have looked at different softwares to utilize, and I've done a demo with Tyler Technologies, and I will say, I don't know if they're watching tonight, but when I did my demo, they said that their, uh, marketing team actually reached out to the person, the sales rep that's assigned to our area, and asked him to reach out to us, because he had heard, or they had heard us, me, all of us, talk about the issues that I've had in Casell, and they wanted to offer their services to us anyway. And then I reached out to them apparently about the same time. But I have done a demo to hopefully get a new software, depending on the cost and such, hopefully this.
Been a pretty active conversation.
Yeah, yeah, I'm still working on it, they got me an amended, uh, quote, so I can look at that before I even ask you guys to go out for bids and look for anything else, I wanna make sure that what I'm looking at is what I need.
Can you get that on the future agenda to give us a, an update, a formal update on, on?
I would like to look at some more companies
Correct.
before I ask you guys to go out for bid for a company to actually get quotes from first.
Okay.
I would like to do a little more research before asking to go out for bid.
And of course, the desire is.
But I will have it on agenda at some point, because I wanna change it.
And of course, the desire is, is that the tools that we're using are up to par, so number one, it makes your job easier, so you don't have to take extra time out of your personal life. You wanna spend time with your family, right, I mean, why do you wanna do that? Right, so.
Young once in all, I mean, why should I spend time?
I know, I know some things are more expensive, but at the same time, we might need to like, we need the information, of course.
Right.
In a timely manner, cause we can't make decisions going forward.
No matter what software we get, it's going to be more expensive, but QuickBooks is very expensive, and it's, I don't think it's our best option. I think there's much better options out there for the whole city's needs, and QuickBooks may or may not offer everything that I need. Cause it's not just general fund stuff.
Right, I, I just mentioned them because I know that's what, I know of businesses and churches that use it, and it's a very, apparently very great, but I don't know how that would help with, in a city's or a municipal setting.
Alright, call for the vote.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Sharpshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Item I, discussion, consider amending Title I, Chapter Five, Section Mayor and City Council of the Prior Creek Ordinance is to determine length and term for committee members, and establish when the nomination of committee members shall occur.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Gauthier, second from Rashir.
You asked us to come back with a date, I thought October one sounded pretty reasonable. And if any vacancies occur, one-year terms, first, first council meeting in October, I guess would be the best way to put that, with one-year terms, and then if anybody is not in office for the remainder of their term, whoever succeeds them in their office will assume that role until the next nomination period. I think that Oc- October one gives us to get through the budget year portion of it, and any negotiations or anything that may be ongoing that hopefully are all wrapped up by then. But that, that, you asked us to come with a date, that one was the one that seemed the most reasonable to me.
So, it would be October one to September thirtieth of the following year?
Yeah, right. I think so. Give you a month or two before you will want to the next negotiation.
Yeah, that's probably the most logical.
Further discussion?
What if the particular members of that committee you're talking about are defeated in the next election, if it goes from October to September?
I think you said that they would be, that whoever will assume office.
Oh, it would just move up, okay.
Succeeds, then moves into that role until October.
Okay, sorry.
Would it be better in the event that, like, let's say you and I are new, would, we want somebody who's already been on there, on, on the council? I mean, at the end of the day, we're still gonna have to nominate somebody that, even if they, they succeed, and we still have to formally vote on them, I guess we could have that discussion, I would think, at that time.
Chair, the committee just decides who's gonna be the chair.
Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Sharpshire?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Item J, discussion to consider amending Title I, Chapter Five, Section One, Mayor and City Council Prior Creek Ordinance is to dictate the, that the chair of each committee be entrusted with the setting of the agenda for their prospective committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Gauthier, second from Brown, discussion? Pretty short and sweet. Okay, call for the vote.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Sharpshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Okay, item K, discussion, uh, to consider amending Title I, Chapter Five, Section One, Mayor and City Council of the Prior Creek Ordinance is to determine the procedures for nominating the president of the council, length of term and nominee of nomination, duties, and notification process for when the position assumes the duties of mayor, and the notification process for when the mayor resumes their duties.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Gauthier, second from Brown?
I think the discussion we had in O N I was to do a two-year term, because that was easier for, as president of the council, and Terry might be able to speak to this, but there's a lot of things that you're gonna have to, you gotta go get on checking accounts, you gotta do lots of work that I think that the city clerk would appreciate not having to do every year.
The silly turk is what I almost said, the city clerk would very much appreciate not having to do that, and she has to facilitate that every single time, so. Additional duties would be.
Yeah, the only, I guess, I mean, we're not taking.
There's a lot of paperwork that they have to do.
A lot.
Not only affecting her, but also the city treasurer. And banks have to, too.
Or bank.
The only, the only thing that was probably outstanding on that was, and I think that that could probably be in October, it could be in May, I don't know that I have a feeling one way or the other on that one, but when that position is assuming the duties of the mayor, and what that notification process needs to be, I know that we had some discussion in O N I about you know, if I'm going to Tulsa, am I notifying somebody versus am I leaving the state, or am I gonna be gone for an extended period of time, and in my mind, it, it probably would just be if you're gonna be gone for more than a day, and I would think that you would, I would think that the mayor should notify the president of the council that, hey, I'm gonna be gone. If something happens, you're, you are at the helm right now. that, hey, I'm gonna be gone. If something happens, you're, you are at the helm right now. But I don't know what the rest, how the rest of the council feels, but.
I will say the term, it would be much easier for my banking stuff that I have to do if it coincides with the election term.
I think that's fine.
Because if there were another mayor, clerk, or treasurer, I'm gonna have to change those bank papers at that time anyways.
And we had said the same thing, if it happens to be that, it's, it's a two-year term for that one, but if somebody was not elected in that one-year term, that we would just renominate somebody for, and they would serve for one year until the next two-year term. And, and it would be on odd number years, which is following what the state statute outlines it for, for some forms of government.
And I've said this before, that I wanna emphasize again that whoever is picked for that position has to know that they are the next one in line to be the mayor of the city if something should happen to the current mayor, whether they resign, pass away, whatever. You are, you are-
That's one of these words.
Well, succeed, succeed, you know what I mean, just like vice president.
Well, but to your point, they have to be available, right?
Be available too. They have to be available and understand that you are the one that's to step in and be the new mayor. And you have to be willing to take on that role. So it's just something to seriously think about.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I would want to accept it with a full-time job that I have. I, I couldn't make that commitment.
But also, I think on there, we talked about this in O and I, is the commitment to the terminology. In my tenure on the, with the city, and I know Joya's and... No, I know your name. I was trying not to say hundred-year. You were back in eighty-seven. Hell, how did you?
Eighty-six.
Just for clarification, Councilman Smith was on from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-eight. And he was going off as I was coming on from eighty-eight to ninety-two. So, yeah, we were, we're eighties babies. We're, we're veterans back in the day.
Well, with Bruce's autographed Bible over there, we should be good. But I think, um, the terminology that we've heard through the time is vice mayor or council president. This would also designate that to president of the council or council president. We would, in essence, do away with that vice mayor nonsense.
Cause it, it's in the charter that it says president of the council, right? So that would have to go to the people to change that anyway.
Right.
But it, heritage, that's what it's been.
Any other discussion on that? Call for the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir's?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Item L, possible executive session concerning employment, hiring, appointment, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of Sierra Brown, Prior Creek Police Department, twenty-five, three oh seven B, one.
Motion.
We have a motion from Brown and a second from Rashir, call for the vote.
Lamar?
Yes.
Shropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Rashir's?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gantier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
I think we're item in. Consider resuming regular session. No action taken during executive session.
Motion.
Second motion from Greshir and a second from Gauthier.
Uh, Schropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Greshirs?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
All right. Item in. Possible action based on executive session concerning the employment, hiring, employment promotion. Demotion, disciplining resignation of Sierra Brown, prior priest. Prior Creek Police Department, uh, twenty-five, three oh seven B one.
Motion, no action.
Second.
Got a motion, no action from Gauthier, second from Brown. Call for vote.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Greshirs?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Schropshire?
Yes.
I make committee reports. Budget personnel?
The twelfth.
Ordinance insurance?
I think in December.
Like the twenty-ninth or something, little tail end of the month?
Yeah.
If needed.
But I know they got several, I, I thought they had several different months with Tuesdays that we could substitute if we had to, or fifth Tuesday.
Right, but the scheduled, next scheduled one is around there.
Yeah.
Street maintenance?
Uh, the twenty-sixth.
Uh, unforeseeable business. I only know of one item, uh, that I was just made aware of. It is Autumn's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday!
Well, I don't know, really. Is it? Yes, happy birthday to Autumn.
It is Autumn, right?
Do we need a motion for the entire council to sing happy birthday to her?
I'll second that motion.
I'm not making it, just so you know.
Gilbert needs to sing it.
I think Phyllis is prepping up back there. Uh, guys, I appreciate it. Good conversations tonight, um, but I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Gauthier, second from Greshir. Call for the vote.
Greshirs?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Schropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Okay. Call to order the prior Public Works Authority.
Mm-hmm.
Um, do I have a, sorry if I'm going way too fast.
No, you're good, you're good. Go.
Uh, we will, uh, need a motion to approve the minutes of the October fifteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Gauthier, second from Greshir. Call for the vote when you're ready.
Brown?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Schropshire?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Abstain.
Greshirs?
Yes.
Too many B R As.
I know.
No unforeseeable, there are most adjourned.
Motion.
Motion from Greshir. Second from Gauthier. Call for the vote.
Trammell?
Yes.
Gauthier?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lamar?
Yes.
Schropshire?
Yes.
Hey, guys.
Hey.
The microphones are on.
It's your birthday, girl, be quiet.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Greshirs?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, yes, we're done, Larry.
Now you can cut up.
Are we adjourned now, Pat?
We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.